Be seven o'clock, I'd like to call the planning board meeting for September first twenty twenty one meeting. First, we have a continued public hearing for Blue Water Bay Development LLC site application special permit for proposed warehouse distribution facility located at fifty-three Sturbridge Road and zero Sturbridge Road. To allow a building height of greater than thirty-six feet, but no more than one hundred and ten feet in BP zone by a lot of seventy-five acres or more. At the turn over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mark Donahue, for the record, from Fletcher Hilton on behalf of the applicant. According to the schedule that we had established some time ago, this evening is focused on civil engineering. Site design issues related thereto and the feedback from Graves Engineering, your peer reviews. Which has had the opportunity to work with John Perry and the team. That review will include a review. Briefly of the landscaping that's proposed and some issues with regard to lighting that the board had expressed an interest in. And then we'll have presentation from our acoustical consultant Ben Mueller with regard to his studies. Done with regard to sound impacts and some of the mitigation done there, but with your permission. We would first like to do the sense of filing, there's been some modifications and updates that bring you up to date as to where the project stands on an overall basis. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Hi, everyone, thank you again for joining us on this rainy evening. Appreciate your time again, and as Mark said, the focus of today's presentation will be on. The peer review on the site civil as well as the acoustics finding. But I'll go through the schedule again, so we're excited to present those heels. Like Mark said, I just have a couple of project updates for everyone and for those who weren't able to join previous meetings. So I'm just gonna run through that very quickly. So everyone can see my screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, so just a reminder, project overview, project team, we're Blue Water, as you guys know. Joint ventured with Bay Colony to form Blue Water Bay. Development Ace LLC, the end user is Amazon, we all know the project team, just a reminder of. Some of the great benefits that come along with this project, we're talking about over a thousand jobs. Significant tax-based increase and of course ancillary community benefits that. Amazon is actively speaking about with sort of management right now. As Mark said, this is just a refresh of what the, what we've talked about in the past and what's coming up. We've spoken about the overview of the project, talked about view sheds. Last meeting, we discussed in detail the traffic peer review and the responses. Acoustics had to get moved to this meeting, which we're hoping to cover. And then the subsequent meeting on the fifteenth will be coming back to this board with further detail and follow up on some of the traffic related items as well as. Further kind of closing the loop with the peer review on the traffic component. And then moving into architecture and other open items that come from the traffic meeting as well as. Moving into the community and fiscal impact that we hope to present towards, towards the later part of the meeting. Just so everybody's aware of what we've been up to over this last month and a half since, you know, being in front of this board. MIPA has been a big focus of our effort right now, so we received our certificate for the draft EIR. We're moving into the responses for MIPA, we hope to have a submission. In response to all of the questions of which there were many from very various jurisdictions and, you know, community members. We're looking to submit that around September thirtieth. So that's been a big focus of our team's energy right now, just making sure that all the questions that came up through the MIPA process are being addressed and will be submitted. As part of our. The next stage in the MIPA process. Angela is here and knows that we've been going through a fair amount of back and forth with the Conservation Commission, so we'll continue to respond to Angela's comments. And the board, the Conservation Commission's comments simultaneous to the planning board. We've received all the peer review comments from Graves, which we're going to go through. Today as well as MDM and have now received the next round of comments from MDM at this point, just so everybody's aware of that. And are in the process of going through them and making sure that we're all ready to address any other open items on September fifteenth. And then there's a couple of kind of site-related additions that I'm, we're gonna talk about very briefly that John will get more into. But we did add an additional parcel to the site. On route, the Route one sixty-nine side to improve our impact to the wetlands and ensure safer grading at Route one sixty-nine. So there's really no material impact except for. We have an improved grade at the one Route one sixty-nine entrance, which was. A big challenge, I'm sure John can talk about. That that's a much safer kind of grade for the traffic coming from our site. And as well as having a number of benefits related to the wetlands, you know, pulling certain things out of the wetlands, moving away from. Wetland areas in the roadway and so forth, so. This just shows kind of again, in more detail, this entrance has moved over one, one parcel over. And you can kind of see it up close here. So there's a couple of, it pulls, it allows us to snake more closely here so that we can achieve a safer grade for traffic. And then it allows us to kind of center the driveway entrance and allows more buffers kind of between the neighboring properties. Again, which Ben is going to talk about in his acoustic study as well as John in the, in the site civil. Graves is aware of this change and has, has reviewed the plans with this modification. The other thing that came out of the Graves Engineering discussion was just the relocation of this stormwater feature. So this was brought up by Graves as something that we should look at relative to maintenance, which was a very, a point well taken, so. We've now modified the plan to bring stormwater out of this location, which again. Has the answer, another benefit of removing it out of the riverfront area, so we think it's an improvement to the wetland condition. And we've been, we've moved it to a location basically under the parking lot, so. This is also a change to our plan, again, our Conservation Commission. Application as well as the updated plans and responses to the peer review all reflect these changes. But we thought it worth pointing out to this board as well, just for reference. The other thing that has come out of which we'll, we'll talk more. At September fifteenth meeting is through the MIPA process. We have gotten some updates to the study area, I think Jeff mentioned this at the last plan, but I, we didn't kind of formally. Stay, present it, we. But just so you guys know, we've added six more intersections through Sturbridge and on Route twenty to our study area, so that will now be included in, in, in the study area. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to John to kind of dive into the details and talk about the, the stormwater, so. John, I'm gonna pull up your presentation here.
Can I just interrupt and add a question? More of the, the high level. Have we been making any progress on putting any of this information up on a, a public website? Especially your presentations are great. And the public is probably very interested in some of these changes and the original application, just to stay. Apprised of the status and the changes that are coming.
Yeah, so typically we take, we post these presentations on the town website and then I like to try to put it on the Facebook pages to let people know. We actually have a website that's currently be under construction and I would be more than happy to post these presentations on that website as well. And kind of continue to do it through the towns, you know, linking to the towns website. I also send the presentation to anyone who asks, we've been, you know, trying to send everything to the towns of Sturbridge and Southbridge to keep them up to speed. As far as other public outreach, we actually have a legislative briefing with state representative scheduled for September fourteenth. So I'll be in the area prior to that, so I'm. I can talk to my team about kind of adding a public forum. Informational session at that point, too, I'll be there in person with materials, so.
We do also have it on, under our planning board page. You know, at certain occasions, we have a significant change on everybody as we're moving forward.
And then, okay, excellent, and then on what?
I, I will, I will, once we relaunch our website, I'll make sure that we have a link to all the previous presentations as well and I'll put it on the Charlton Happening site again. And just make sure that we're continuing to get the word out.
Yeah, that's one thing I don't have, I just have the documentation, I don't have the presentation.
Right, right, and then what was the website that you were mentioning that you have control of for authorship?
Called opportunityforcharlton.com, I believe. But I can again send that website to Randy, make sure it's, it's posted there. And I can, I think I can update our website with hyperlinks to all of our PDFs. But I believe Randy, you've been posting the PDF of the presentations, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I'll do the same after.
You're talking about these presentations, I have not been posting these. They actually post the whole meeting on YouTube, but I don't. Oh, sees as PDF.
That's what I haven't seen, these presentations from that.
It's only done when, you know, the cable puts it on YouTube.
Okay, well, I can, I've been sending them, so. There's no problem.
Are you doing a legislative briefing for this location or just in general for Blue Water Bay's projects?
For this location.
September eighth.
September fourteenth. And that will be held at the Charlton Town Library. To which everyone is obviously welcome, but it will be a repeat of much of the same information.
Thank you.
I will make sure this gets posted in a, in a very, all of it gets posted in a clear way and circulated through the Facebook pages early next week.
Thank you. Is this a good place to stand to the camera?
Yeah, the camera will follow you.
Okay, yeah, excellent, all right, so as Alex mentioned, you know, we said that we come into this meeting tonight and. Give a high-level presentation on stormwater, we submitted our stormwater management report with our original application, it's come through. Iteration. And we've gone back and forth with Graves Engineering on a couple of responses. Nothing major in my opinion, at this point, we've satisfied all the stormwater comments. We've also presented our. Conservation. And we're still going through that process now. And so we're, me and all of the state stormwater standards and the local stormwater standards, which were recently adopted by Conservation Commission in June, which are much actually higher level. Standard than the state sets forth for us, so that'll be instead of preamble, let me just take it through the presentation. This is the site which you've all seen and are aware of. At fifty-three Sturbridge Road, about a hundred acres total. What we want to show here, then you can see the contour lines in kind of light gray going around the site and ten-foot contours to give a sense for the geography. It's, it's fairly regular shaped hill. As you can see, the stormwater would sheet off in all directions essentially towards the perimeter. What you're seeing in color are the button resource areas around the site, which were of course, I went through Conservation and. The legend is hidden in the background of the screen, but the green is the wetlands. Pink are the, pink and dark blue are the wetland buffer zones, the white blue is a riverfront area. Alex, go to the next slide, please. There's a delay. Next slide. There we go, okay, so this is our justing watershed map. So what we did, we broke out, just typical first stormwater analysis. Back one, please. We broke up five watershed areas around the site, as I mentioned before, everything drains to the perimeter. And we're, we've designated five design points. So let's reload here for a second. Here we go, so we've designated five design points to analyze our stormwater peak flows at. Wash it A is to the bottom left of the screen is a culvert there. Near the, the open body of water that goes under Route twenty. Kind of going counterclockwise, bottom right of the screens, why should be, which is an intermittent stream on the. Cable property that we wanted to make sure we were matching flows that. Water should see is to the, along, along Route one sixty-nine. So we can make sure we're matching flows at Route one sixty-nine and not exacerbating any issues for the neighbors there. Water should D towards the top of the page is the stormwater that would flow towards or to the tributary to Katie Brook. Which eventually goes under, flows under Route one sixty-nine via cover and finishing it off. Northernmost watershed point, Wash it E is the stormwater that would, that does discharge to Route twenty directly. And a little bit of it gets onto that, the flooding property there as well, so that's the justing wash and that, the dash lines. Heavy dash lines are how we delineate each area, the lines of the arrows are the general flow patterns. Which is, which dominates our concentration. Next slide, please. So per typical for stormwater management, we then analyze all of those design points, those five exact same design points. In the post-development condition to make sure that we're meeting or reducing flow rates at each location and we are. The way we're doing that and the way we're meeting our water quality treatment and recharge volumes is through a series of underground. And above-ground detention systems and infiltration basins, so the more rectangular shaped. Blue shapes within the parking areas are underground. Systems, detention systems, which we're proposing use, use large pipe, eight-foot diameter. Illuminized metal pipe. Surrounded in crushed stone. For detention volume and the more irregular shapes, the larger ones are infiltration basins. And then we do have two rain gardens, one at the driveway entrance on Route twenty and another one. At the driveway entrance near Route one sixty-nine and. We're using water quality treatment units at all of the underground pipe systems. Both a particle separator unit at each of them. To meet our total suspended solids requirements, which removes, you know, sands and more fine particles. And then downstream to those systems, we're going to be installing. A storm filter unit, which is going to give us a much higher level of treatment than the state requires, it's good to meet the new local regulations. For phosphorus removal, so we're meeting sixty percent phosphorus removal that way. The rain gardens and infiltration basins inherently will give us our TSS removal and phosphorus removal as well, since those are planted and they have a filter media in them. So quite a robust stormwater system here. And again, we're reducing peak flow rate at all of the design points. Next slide, please. And this is just showing it again, kind of in context, the previous slide was our proposed watershed map, you see how it's broken out. This is our overall grading plan again with those colors, the resource areas, you can see how, how everything lays out. Any questions on the stormwater? Stormwater garden is what, just a pond, a detention basin above ground? Yeah, so the more technical terms of bioretention area, rain garden, it's kind of like a smaller. A smaller infiltration area, it has a soil media at the bottom of it. That the water trickles through, almost like a, kind of like a sand filter, yeah, and it's planted. It fenced to prevent access or? The infiltration basins will be fenced, because those are a little bit deeper, the rain gardens are only about a foot deep. So we typically will leave those open, the nice thing about those is that. It's almost like a garden, it's called a rain garden, maybe it's for a reason, right, you have nice plants in there and they can look, they can look aesthetically pleasing. And if you leave them open, you know, if there's any trash that gets caught in there, people actually want to go over there and remove it and kind of do a little bit of maintenance, you know, as they see it, so.
The, my question, you are gonna have plantings in the rain garden?
Yes, yeah, well, at least the, the majority will be a metal mix, so it'll kind of grow up naturally, there are some other landscape plantings around the edges as well. And actually have our landscape architect Michael Hutton on the Zoom, who's gonna give a presentation on the site lighting and planting as well. So if you'd like, I can turn it over to him, this is any other, you know, stormwater questions. Or the rain gardens will just pass it on to the local. Hold it, retrain it and just generally go on. Yeah, and one of them is a little bit of infiltration and the other one, the one more near Route one sixty-nine, that's gonna. Interface with the local. Exactly, yeah, it'll infiltrate, it'll trickle through the soil media. And we have an underdrain that'll outlet to Kever. Do any of them go under the road? You catch them all before it goes? Under the public roads? Yeah, the public. No, the, the one near Route one sixty-nine will discharge to Katie Brook. Which goes under, you know, that goes under one sixty-nine, of course, and then the rain garden over by Route twenty. Will also have an underdrain. And will, there's an overflow on that as well, that will, the main, the main outlet for that will overtop and go down. Down to Route twenty as it does now.
Is there any catch basins right now?
Yeah, this one right there. One right there, and also that's part of our roadway widening as well, so we're gonna be outstanding in stormwater and doing this as well. Are you able to introduce that to Route twenty's drainage with that problem? Well, we'll get, we'll get that permitted through, through MAST D O T, that's where everything goes now. So we're again reducing flow rates and we can prove that. And how about snow removal and storage? We have some designated snow removal areas around the site. You know, typically, we wouldn't allow snow storage within any of the basins or within the rain gardens and that will be in the operations maintenance plan. Yeah, so you don't push snow into the rain gardens into any of these basins? No. Yeah, just doubling back on that, we've had several applicants that have had trouble discharging water under Route twenty without. Because the state has told them they're not able to do that, so you're saying there's a permit that people are able to apply for to use the. Create it on Route twenty. Well, we're going through a whole permitting process with MAST D O T for roadway widening and so certainly be looking at that as well. We've accomplished on that. Yeah. The vast majority, we have catch basins going all the way down the road, the driveway that lead to Route twenty there. Which the vast majority picked up by our. You know, kind of that base, elongated basin that's along the, the roadway there.
Yes, only for the old.
Yeah, there's a, there's a little bit of kind of halfway through that larger basin between Route twenty and our driveway there, is where the grade. Doesn't allow any more water to, to flow into that basin, that basin discharges to the wetland, to the, to the west, which flows under Route twenty. There's a very small portion that goes to that rain garden that's captured and collected and detained. Before it would overtop to Route twenty. And if MAST D O T allows us to introduce a underdrain into their closed drainage system, that's what we're gonna propose to do. And for snow, just give me a rough, quick summary of how you clear and move snow off, off the parking. There's some designated areas on site which are, you know, somewhat flat in, in the, in the non-parking areas. But a lot of the north side looks like there's a pretty big fence there that you couldn't push snow over, so it's all coming towards the, you know, the south side, that little. There's a wall, there's the wall with a guardrail there, we do have. A shoulder between the curb and the guardrail that we. We wouldn't want to stop while much snow there at all, but they can, you know, a little bit can, can get plowed along the edge there. And the rest of it, they're gonna have to, you know, move it with a loader or plow to some other area. Stone removal. Yeah, well, they'll have quite an operation for, for snow removal. No, you know, we'll, the tenant will certainly deal with snow in a way that it's, it's, it's not gonna be a safety hazard. Obviously, it's in their interest to remove snow and keep all the roadways and parking lots clear for their employees and their trucks.
Yeah, and this is twenty-four hour operation, right? Is a stone, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. I know you're not the, the operator of the building, but do you see them keeping equipment on site here to clear snow?
It'd have to.
Yeah, right? So where are they gonna put the equipment, in a garage or where do they keep this equipment? Well, it's gonna be, you know, plows and loaders and that, so those would typically be outdoors. Just taking parking space somewhere, yeah. Is your sediment, all your sediment structures. Designed to look for that sand and all that salt that washes into them. Yes, to take that material out of it before it's introduced to your, your drainage system. Yes, definitely, and, and. So this, this site is classified as a land used with higher potential pollutant loading because of the traffic volume kisses into. Stormwater standard. Five, I believe it is. And if you're a, we call it a loophole to abbreviate it, if you're a loophole, you need to treat, pre-treat one inch of water quality volume instead of half inch. So we're, we're doubling the treatment of water here than we would on some other site. And the treatment is passive or is this a filter system, pumps and? No, it's not pumps, it's, it's all by grabbing, yep. So should, should I turn it over to? Unless?
So yes, is anybody online that? Yeah, he's still staying on engineering, he's.
That's fine.
Yeah, I guess, does anyone from the public have any questions about stormwater? No one has a question, Mike Andrew, do you want to add anything that? John went over.
Heaven raised can.
I'll be quick.
Okay, all right, hold up Kevin, Mike's gonna go real quick, if you don't mind waiting.
No problem.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, good evening, nice to see you all again, it's been a little while. So as Mr. Perry went over, obviously there's extensive impervious areas proposed. And along with that comes extensive drainage systems with, which they've, with the, which is explained and gone through on both on the ground and above-ground systems. We have now, as of today, had three peer reviews of the site plans. Today was the third letter which wraps up most of our comments. And as usual, most of them are stormwater related, all of those are resolved at this point. There are two sort of outstanding comments we can talk about now or later if you want. But we're pretty much, as far as the plan stands right now. Most of my comments have been addressed barring any further changes or questions or comments. That's where we're at the moment.
All right, Mike, thank you very much.
You know, we might want to address those, are you talking about the parking being one of them, Mike?
I'm talking, yeah, if you're looking at my letter from today, that comment number three. And I think it was maybe the attorney for the project that pointed out, there is, there is a bit of a inconsistency in the, in two sections of the bylaw with regard to the location of the. Two sections of the bylaw with regard to the location of the parking for a facility like this in the B E P. One section. Seems to indicate um it can't be on the side and the other seems to kid indicate that it. Uh can be uh the front. Uh regardless, uh their position is what they're proposing complies with um the bylaw. I would recommend uh if it hasn't been done already, that the board just get the opinion of the. Sonic Enforcement Officer on that, just for clarification. Uh cause there is some question there. I think there is some question there with those two sections that I've quoted. Uh as it relates to uh this project and others, other B U projects. So that was, that's one of the items, number three. Um second item is number seven, and that's mostly uh regarding the dumpster location. Um and maybe they can point it out to you in the room there. It's behind the building. Uh assuming it's still there, behind the building. Uh and they're not proposing screening. It's basically up against the building where the loading uh bays are. Um I think that location is pretty well screened from um uh the general public, employees, public ways. Um so I just left it as an open comment for the board to review if they felt screening might be necessary there as well, but. I think given the elevation and then all the uh the building and and the topography changes around it, it's probably not necessary.
Can somebody point that out? I wasn't sure where those dumpsters are gonna land.
Yeah, um it's. It's in the kind of top right, southern, self um. Western corner of the building there, there's a the.
So the road comes in, you got the smoker, shelter, transformer.
It's on the one sixty nine side of the building or is it on the? Well, John talked of that. Randy, did you happen to check with uh Curtis?
I couldn't check with him today, but there is an inconsistency. I think what would probably happen in this particular case. It is disagreement with um. Blue water that we probably just have to ask for a waiver on the park.
Okay.
Um at the, at the most, I mean, it's, they are correct. There isn't any consistency, but I, I recommend we get.
Okay, all right, perfect.
So would that go through the zoning if it needed to?
You can do it as a waiver, but you just have to do a full variant, so a waiver just sits for drinking away, you know.
I know, Mark, if you wanted to. Their opinion that. The bylaw, the bylaw that allows parking. And that's a little more explicit than the one that it conflicts with.
Okay.
And therefore. Uh you know, we were planning to get an opinion from the building inspector.
Okay.
We on that.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get it just so that we're all on the same page and it doesn't.
Yeah, let's get, we'll touch base with them, provide some information, try to close it out that way. We'll just deal with the response anyway.
Are there any other waivers? That is the only one I've heard so far.
We, we believe the plan is in full compliance, so hopefully resolve this issue.
All right, well, what? Well, these, well, John's looking at that. We'll take a question from Kevin. Go right ahead with the question, Kevin, just to keep this rolling.
Yeah, thank you. Uh good evening. I was wondering if you could just touch on. A little bit more on the filtration of the parking areas, particularly. Regarding any um automotive fuels. Um things like that, things that don't necessarily get filtered out by sediment filters. Um you know, if. If there's petroleum or other fuel byproducts, things like that, that are gonna be going into the groundwater. That would be a concern as a abiding property owner.
Go right ahead, John, if you wanna elaborate on that.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, actually, in um in this case, we do have a a higher level of treatment, kind of a second. Third level treatment even, which is, which are the storm filters for the phosphor removal, so that would um filter out. The vitamins that, yeah.
So any petroleum product that'll lead from?
I wouldn't say any petroleum product. Correct, it's, it's meant to treat for the, the items that would be in, you know, in that sort of broth. And, you know, I. You, you wouldn't expect to see. Fuel or petroleum or anyone that getting into the system, you know.
All right, Kevin, do you have anything else? I see your hand still up.
Yeah, just um just as a follow-up to that. I wouldn't have expected that from the property across the street from my property, but there was a. Uh significant fuel spill there. Which affected my well and uh that's probably gonna be something I'd have to deal with the rest of my life.
Yeah, unfortunately, I I recall when that happened. Yeah, I'll tell you the story after.
If it helps, Kevin, this is Alex. Um you know, there, there's no fuel stored on these sites. Um I'm not sure what the exact situation was and what you're speaking about, but. And in case that gives context.
I agree that there's no fuel storage proposed for the facility, but there's forty-nine. Loading docks in each one of those loading docks and in addition to all the other. Vehicle storage on the facility. Um they all have fuel tanks, so there's actually a. A potential of a higher amount of fuel being on the, on the property than on the property across the street from my residence.
All right, John, wanna, is your fun location of that dumpster?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's um. Basically, I'll point to the screen. It's in the, it's in the middle of the southernmost edge of the building. There's three. Three rectangle units out. You can probably zoom in on that, just about where you have this.
The, the black ones.
Yeah, they take a few of the um. Truck parking or the truck loading base. Yep, it's um. Yeah, just pan up a bit. Yeah, right there. So there's three rectangles right next to the seven forty-four. Um there's two augers and there's one conductor.
Okay.
So that's within the truck loading area. Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. So if the, if the issue is screening, you, you know. You're only gonna see that if you're on site.
Correct.
Yeah, it's gonna be such a large flat area behind and even the houses on one sixty nine. Then we looking way over the top of each other.
Just didn't notice, I guess, one question on all your underground. Sisters and and the. Recharge areas. Are there outlets? If they fill up too much, is there a way for them to?
Yes.
Egress to a. Gravity by gravity to an open area.
Yes, they, you know. They all, they all have their. They have a main outlet pipe.
Yeah.
And they go into what we call an L control structure, so it holds water back.
Okay.
So it allows that water to stage up within the entire section of the pipe, it'll go out slowly.
So it's not a true infiltration, well.
The underground.
Hopefully it is.
The underground systems here are actually not infiltration. They're actually detention.
Detention.
That, that stormwater vault, it's like way at the top of the screen.
Yeah, that looks like it's.
All the underground pipe systems are tight systems. Um reason being in, in a couple of places, the soil is not conducive. Um the site in general doesn't have, you know, sandy soils, it's. Dense, yeah, silts. Blush of pills. But also in a few cases where, you know, within some proximity of retaining walls and we don't wanna introduce hydrostatic pressure by the wall, so we typically. We're using our uh above ground infiltration basins to meet our.
Thank you, do I have any other questions in the board?
Yeah, to the chair. Uh just one more thing in the detention basins and the, the stormwater filters, are, do those periodically need cleaning? Or are these just something that uh it's just the, the sand filtration on the bottom that stays? They, they are, will be cleaned periodically. There's an operations and maintenance. Plan that's part of the stormwater. Report that will be permitted through um this board and also the Conservation Commission. It dictates each. Um each different system, when it needs to be cleaned and how, how often. Okay, and that's overseen by the Conservation, I assume?
Mike Andrew, we'd oversee that as well.
Yes, technically both, as we're permitting stormwater through both commissions. So it's open to hear, thank you.
You guys have another presentation?
We do, we forgot to landscape.
Angela, go right ahead.
And in our stormwater regulations, we have seven required inspections. And then we also require reports from their engineer. Up to two years out, if not five, depending on like stabilization production time. We have very set inspection and report.
I don't know if anybody else heard that, but Angela, you, you were breaking up quite a bit.
Oh, I'm sorry, is this better?
Yes.
I'm just saying, under the stormwater regulations, we have seven required inspections that the company itself does, or I do. And we also have. An intensive reporting requirement system dealing with the operation. Of the system. Make sure that it is being properly cleaned, so. They're in. Different BMPs have different cleaning times, so we would require the inspection reports.
Thank you.
That was to be done in your order of conditions, Angela?
Ah yes, it'll be very similar to the one I gave you for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any monitoring wells in these tanks?
Yes, there's monitoring wells in the infiltration basins. And then there are inspection ports in these.
Which is where they would have the access for their inspection, con cons inspection, yes.
All right, anyone else have any other questions?
Be- before we jump into the landscaping and and lighting, I just asked this chairman, if you could just have a affirmation, the other two board members are present during Zoom. The purpose of the record, so you can just ask them to, uh, indicate their attendance, appreciate it.
Yep, Don, you mind just acknowledge your attendance?
Yeah, Don Clay is here.
And Alicia?
Like via Zoom.
Alicia G is here via Zoom.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
And into it. Is that your hand raised again, Angela?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to take it down.
All right, go ahead, John.
So, so next I'd like to introduce uh Michael Hutton, our landscape architect, who um designed the site lighting and landscape.
All right.
We're gonna keep it fairly high level as well and serve, you know, people questions.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Um can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
Okay, perfect. Um Michael Hunter, uh project landscape architect. Uh if for a line in, as John mentioned, uh John and I work very closely on this site. Um just gonna give a, a brief overview of the site lighting plan. And the planting plan, and then obviously, you know, any questions afterward. Um thanks, Alex, for pulling up the lighting plan. Um just as an overview for a site this large, typically, we would propose forty-foot tall poles. Um we're proposing twenty-five foot mounting height uh to meet the, the ordinance requirements. Uh the fixtures that we are proposing. Are, it's called a Cooper galleon fixture. It's a very highly energy efficient LED fixture. Um four thousand Kelvin for color temperature. If you're familiar with Kelvin and color temperature, that would be. On, on the whiter end of the spectrum, um somewhat softer than, than true white. The fixtures are on the perimeter of the site, have house side shields. Uh built into them, um not, not like, like the older house side shield where it'd be an actual physical shield. Uh this is actually built into the individual LED fixtures themselves to direct light towards. Uh the site and away from the abutting properties. Light levels proposed basically meet the minimum security recommendations um for I E S and A, which is the Illuminating. Engineering Society of North America for security and and safety. There's a combination of pole mounted fixtures, um you know, going up the, the entry and exit drives along the perimeter. Um there's some pole fixtures. As well within the parking lot areas and the loading areas. Um and then around the perimeter of the building. There are also some lights around the perimeter just to provide access. Um I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, not access, to provide some lighting. Um for pedestrian access, basically. So that's the overview of, of the lighting. It's all dark sky compliant. Everything is a downlight. Um there, with the exception of. Uh flag uplighting, um because there are flags, flag poles proposed on the site, but that's only directed at the flagpole. Um so everything is dark sky compliant. That's an overview of the lighting. Um if there's any questions on lighting, I guess we can take them now before going to planting.
Anyone have a question?
Michael, just a quick uh observation on the prints, the site lighting plans, like the LL one oh one. Bunch of numbers on the ground. Is that some estimate of illumination from the?
Oh, sure. Sure, we can, we can explain that. Um. The um, the point levels on the ground plane are called foot candle values. So that represents um lumens per square foot on the ground. So the way we develop these plans, um we actually use what's called I E S files. And back in the day, you would use a template, a lighting template that would show the general uh light levels around each fixture, depending on the output of that fixture. Um uh you know, today, we import all these different files into a computer model. That actually models the interface of all the poles next to each other. So what you would get on the ground level as the measure. Of light would be a foot candle value. Um to help explain that um a little further, we have a measuring tool that you could take out to a site after. Um the lighting is installed, just to verify that you meet those levels that you decided with.
I, I get it. I was just, that's pretty impressive level of detail there for foot candles by the square inch. That's pretty good.
I think in this plan, we may have done it on twenty by twenty foot grid, um just because the, the size of these sheets, but. You know, for pedestrian areas, we actually look at it more like a five by five foot grid to make sure that we're, we're accurate in those levels.
And may have another question.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, and these are all powered by line voltage or not solar lighting?
Correct. Um none of these are solar um lighting. There is a lot of development. Within that world of a. You know, solar lighting for fixtures like this, it's not quite there yet, to be, to be perfectly honest. To power the higher output fixtures that you would use on a site like this. It's more usable at this point in time for low-level ballards and accent lighting and those sort of fixtures. The technologies come a long way. Maybe in a couple of years, it'll be uh more cost effective and. Um energy efficient to do that, but not quite there yet.
I had a question about the driveway um that curves around the south side of the building. And it's near some, but are currently residential properties on Route one twenty nine. And it's near some but are currently residential properties on Route one six nine. Given the elevation change, is there going to be any issue where people like in those homes are looking up at the site where those lights are going to be intrusive to the people in those homes? Southeast corner there, where the driveway loops around the back parking lot.
Right, so Alex, if you can zoom in on that, to answer your question, sir. All of those poles are, for one, they're facing inward towards the site, twenty five foot mounting height. There is a significant drop in grade there. But again, all those poles would be facing inward towards the site. So with the house side shields built into the fixture, so they'd be facing and the light would be directed away from those homes. Not to mention the existing wooded areas that would be preserved to help screen. So I don't I don't think that would be an issue.
There are also some some around that part of the road too.
It's just a very significant grade change there. There just want to make sure we don't have any issue that these residential properties are in the backyard looking up like in at the light because of the elevation change.
Yeah, no, no light would be shining back towards our property. There is a, John, maybe you could point out if you're there, you know, in person, there's a berm in that location as well. But for most of that, again, it's pointing toward toward the site for all of it, actually.
I'm not worried about the light shining on it. I'm worried about the light glow. When you when you're at any place where the elevation's higher, you're looking up at a light and the light glow is like in your eyes.
I think when Michael presents on the landscape plan, we can take a look back too, because you'll see that there are some some screening.
I I just want to make sure that we don't end up with any issue for the residential properties over in that area.
It's also a few hundred feet away. We're, I know, we didn't put the the zoomed in version of the the photometric plan in the presentation here. But we are a zero foot candle well inside of the property line.
Yeah, but I also know what it's like when you're seeing at a lower elevation. So you have a shop in center and you're on the elevated plane, you're looking up into the light. No matter, you know, whether the foot candles at the property line are still from a distance, you're looking up at it. And that's why I just try to make sure we don't have an impact on those property rooms. So that's why vegetation there is probably the best thing. It is already you know, small forests here to make sure that.
That's a good. It's a great question, because you're right. If it doesn't matter how full cut off the fixture is. If you're looking up towards it, you'll see the glare effect. This will be a combination of the house side shields built into those fixtures, pointing away as well as what John had just mentioned. The proposed landscape screening to supplement that.
How far does that berm go to? I know the berm's quite substantial down by Cape and Hill on the bottom of this. Where's the transition between the berm as it goes north or east there as it transitions down?
You know, I can point for you, whatever people home can see. We see the contours. Here, it's kind of around with the berm.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. You're in there. It's kind of where the roads start to curve around. That's the end of the berm. It does start to gray off there towards the towards one sixty nine.
Kind of career is pointed. There's anything wrong with that. That'd be a critical area right there.
Yeah, we purposely put a pretty heavy screening of plants over on there as well for that exact purpose.
That's right, John.
One other question for Mr. Hunter. Is, are there any additional traffic lights on Route twenty or one sixty nine? Added or moved or changed that may not be on this lighting plan, but more DOT lighting around the intersections?
No, we're not. We're not contemplating anything like that. We we will need to relocate a couple of between poles on Route twenty.
Right, right.
And then we're going to have our, you know, our traffic signal under twenty.
Right.
But we weren't anticipating, you know, the additional lighting on the roads.
So the traffic signal, but not a street light.
For safety reasons, they would apply some sort of lighting near the, you know, not a traffic light, but some sort of lighting. Sixty nine intersection driveway.
We'll have a sign down there too. They'll be lit as well. So that'll provide some illumination. And then, you know, our our lighting, Michael Kirk from Wrong, our lighting, you know, does go down the driveway. We do light the driveways. We'll be lighting entrances.
But right for for entrance, for entrance lighting, you typically want to be at or slightly greater than what the lighting is on site. So we basically meet what the lighting requirements would be on site. Most, you know, for for state roads, they typically don't like you to throw a lot of light into the roadway because that could be a visual distraction for drivers. So, you know, we're trying to light the entrance drive appropriately. So we're not throwing too much light out into the roadways, but making it safe enough for drivers to see the entrance signage and the entrance driveway for that vehicle movement.
Yeah, on page LL one oh six.
At the street.
Not at the street. It's probably about like I'd say probably like forty fifty feet off, but by the illumination, the foot handle numbers.
Yeah. Are there any street lights existing at those locations on one sixty nine or twenty? I know this is probably out of scope for a lighting plan on site. It's more the DOT light.
Yeah, this is Alex. Sorry if I can chime in. This is, these are great questions. And I would put them on our agenda for the fifteenth with Jeff, because he is much more in tune with the lighting plan there. I know that there's a fair amount of investment, just in overall safety on Route twenty. But I would want him to confirm what the plans are there.
Yeah, he's the right guy. Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, sorry. I just don't want to spin out.
Good question.
You're off the hook, Mike.
All right.
But we will make sure it's addressed next next time.
All right, if there's nothing else, Michael, I'd have you continue on to the planting.
Okay. So as an overview of this planting plan, it meets all the ordinance departments for screening along the road as well as trees within the parking lot. We're preserving, you know, you mentioned the impervious areas on site, but we are, you know, preserving as much as we possibly can of the wooded areas along the site perimeters. And we're adding a significant number of native trees and shrubs. All plantings proposed are native to this region and to Massachusetts. You know, shrubs within screening areas and trees within screening buffer areas as well as parking lots and native wildflower meadow mixes. Just as an overview, so you can kind of grasp the number of plantings on site, we're proposing four hundred and sixty six shade and understory trees, four hundred and forty two evergreen trees, three hundred and thirty four shrubs, three hundred and sixty one native grasses and perennials, as well as three hundred and eighty six vines to help green the retaining walls that will be growing up these walls. So, I mean, you can kind of see the overview of the plan, significant amount of evergreen as well as deciduous trees within the buffer. We don't typically like to design an evergreen wall. It doesn't look natural. But it does help to provide shade for the existing forest edge to prevent invasive species from growing within those wooded areas. In addition to that, all of those evergreen trees are supplemented with what we recall understory or edge tree plantings. Maybe fifteen to twenty foot tall trees that would grow to that height as well as taller shade trees such as oaks and maples and those sort of plantings. If you look within the parking lots, obviously, there's there's trees within those lots, depending on whether a light pole is in that island or not. There may be one or two trees within that island. And then at the entrances on both sides, we really took care to make sure that those are pretty dense planting areas. John pointed out what would be, you know, the rain gardens and the stormwater features to hit to point into the question earlier about maintenance and cleaning those features. The bottom of all those infiltration basins are comprised of a seed mix, meadow seed mix, which is native grasses and wildflowers, pollinator species. But the the purpose of not planting trees within the bottom is that you can go through there, scrape the surface, clean out anything you need to to keep the stormwater basin operating to its optimum level. And then go back and see that bottom again, let the meat the mix growing along the perimeters, however, of those systems. We are proposing a lot of shade trees and understory trees, a variety of trees you're probably familiar with that grow within Charlton today. So it's kind of a twofold operation. One is to stabilize the slopes with those mixes. The other is to supplement the stormwater plan. And I guess the third really is to propose something that's aesthetically pleasing along both entrances as you pass the entrance, but also to help screen the facility from the roadways. I think I think that's the bulk of it. The other thing to note is we have about three hundred and six native restoration sized trees, which I would categorize as like a one gallon sized planting of a tree. And and the purpose of those is to further supplement certain critical areas, such as the area along Cape and Hill and other areas along wetland edges and wooded edges to help restore you know, a much denser native forest along those areas. So there's smaller sized tree plantings, but, you know, will tend to adapt better in those conditions to grow into more of a successional forest over the long term. The intent is really to maintain the areas adjacent to the roadways. You'll see there's a lawn mow strip next to the roadways and all the, you know, proposed development. Beyond that, it's really meant to naturalize. And, you know, the meadow mixes and the trees would grow in over time to really naturalize that and promote habitat. So that's the general overview of the planting plan. If there's any questions on that.
Do you have sprinklers into the parking lot where it's the grasses and the in the little islands? Are there any sprinklers around the property?
We, most, all the plantings on this site are native and drought tolerant, so we're not trying to promote irrigation on the site. However, directly at, I, what you I guess the front of the building, which would be a page north here. Along the main entrance, there is irrigation within those areas. Those islands would be have a kind of a river rock mulch adjacent to the building to prevent mulch fires and those sorts of things next to the building. All those areas would also be irrigated. Anything out in the parking lot is basically lawn and trees, and all those trees would have a mulch bed to them. We're not promoting or proposing irrigation within those areas. But there would be a warranty for the landscape contractor to make sure those are watered in the first couple of years so that they establish. Once they establish, they should be good on the road.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about raining out here right now.
If it keeps raining like it has been this year, it's raining out the window right now, so.
Any other, any questions on the landscaping or the tree plantings? Here none, seen none. Are you guys, Mark, do you guys have anything else?
With regard to civil engineering or landscaping or lighting, we don't have anything else.
Okay.
The answer to any question. We do have Ben Uler of Ostergaard Acoustics available. And if we can stretch our time to try to get his presentation in. That I appreciate you have a lot of things on your agenda, so we'll access what wishes, but you know, we're we're thinking that it's probably about fifty minutes presentation.
All the other items are quick.
Okay, are you guys have a problem?
We had another presentation, but I don't see. He's not here tonight, so we're not getting. Yeah.
Don, do you have a problem?
I have no problem with it. I'd like to hear it.
All right, go right ahead. Do the acoustics.
Thank you. Then I'll certainly move my fifteen minute introduction and introduce Ben Uler of Ostergaard Acoustics to summarize his analysis of the site and some of the improvements that have been built in the site plan. Ben?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, very good. So I'll I'll keep it high level, but certainly can answer questions as they come up. But we're going to walk through the steps that we took to carry out our sound study and to basically show how we are able to comply with all code limits and how we are striving to have a, to minimize our coastal impact on the surrounding properties. You, we will see also in the coming slides that the main approach, which is relative to the state code, is to survey existing conditions. And so by conforming and meeting with that criteria, we are blending in with the existing existing conditions in the area and then will result then, of course, in no negative impact at all site receptors. Next slide. Also, I just briefly about our firm, all all we do is noise control. I'm one of the principals of Ostergaard, and we handle all aspects of applied acoustics. So this obviously evaluation, environmental acoustics would be one of the many things that we dive into. So what we've done here is it carried out a number of of tasks. First, we surveyed this existing sound on near the, around the facility onsite generally to document existing additions, and we did that over a multiple day period. We also did an acoustical model. We heard before with lighting and and other disciplines. The use of of modeling is very effective in in forecasting what any changes might occur. And then based on the combination of of those two steps, we developed mitigation measures that would be needed in order to minimize our impact and to meet the requirements and code limits. Next slide. So our first step in any project is to go over what kind of regulations are are in play. Sound emissions from a site such as this will typically be regulated by local county and state. The state of Massachusetts has a, it's it's a a short noise ordinance, but it does have some meat to it. I do wish that they had expanded and included some definitions or some other things to help guide us more. But but in essence, the Massachusetts state code says that site sound emissions should not exceed the background sound level, which you'll hear we refer to sometimes as the L ninety. And that's the level that occurs ninety percent of the time. And so that the site should not exceed that at the nearest residence by ten dB. So it the the premise is that, you know, there's existing levels that occur, existing ambient is dynamic in nature. There's highs and there's lows. Background sound levels are more aligned with the lows. And so if we are not to be any higher than ten dB over the the bulk of their lows, that will minimize our impact. On the local and county level, however, there were no specific regulations found that could be used to, you know, develop criteria for our project goals. Next slide, please. So i- in essence, we we are relying on the Massachusetts state code to provide the quantitative limits to use as our criteria, and those are are going to be relative to what the existing conditions are. We, we do find that, again, with the Massachusetts state code being a single page document, it's easy to say, don't ever be ten dB higher than than the existing ambient. However, we know that the ambient itself is a variable and and dynamic. And so we need to come up with an approach that makes sense, because you're not going to have a a living code limit. You know, imagine if it said that you should always be, you know, within two miles per hour of the vehicle next to you and that how that would change accordingly. So we we surveyed the ambient over a long period of time, and then we came up with what we feel is a a logical interpretation of that information to to come up with our goal. And again, the goal to minimize the coastal impact of the site and to blend in with current conditions. Next slide. So next we'll discuss the steps we took to do our ambient survey. So what you see on the right hand side of your screen is just a Google Earth image of the site with the site outlined in red. And and we see locations one, two, and three uh which are all onsite. And we selected those locations to kind of typify receptors in those directions. Um so of of most concern, e- everyone's familiar with the site, but um to the west is is a are a few sporadic residences as well as the sanctuary. Um again, southwest sanctuary uh that's near the fire pit uh that that exists. Um and location three is kind of to the southeast uh which would typify um receptors that are along Route one sixty-nine. Um there are some other uh residential receptors that are to like the east. Um but all these locations are are well set back from heavily traveled roadways. And so ultimately gives us a conservative look at what type of sound is in the area. Uh behind the scenes, we measured for a week period uh from June seventeenth to twenty-fourth, which was a Thursday to a Thursday uh earlier this year. Next slide please. So over a seven-day period for three locations, we've come up with a lot of information and that's that's uh you know, just comes along with. Uh such a survey. So our goal here is to try to take that information and distill it down into usable. Um values. We chose to uh take the average value for a variety of statistics. So as we talked about how ambient sound is dynamic, that there's highs and there's lows, those would be your your L min and your L max. Would be your minimum max respectively. Um but we also have other statistics that uh we can look at. So LEQ. Which is in the center of our table here is the average level. So we've basically taken the average average level. Uh but then also we have an L ten, which is uh generally a indicator of intrusive sound in the area. So that would be. Um high higher level activities such as aircraft pass by or louder uh vehicles or um. That are things that might occur uh i- in the area. And then your L ninety, which again. Um refers back to the previous slide of the Massachusetts state code. And that's kind of like the background sound level, what occurs for ninety percent of the time. So for those three locations, we looked at the average across that period. And really just focusing on the L ninety column, we see uh that levels are relatively the same. I mean, there could be some difference. Uh but because one is closer uh to uh more more uh active roadway conditions or. Was subjected to some more local sounds. Uh but basically location one ended up with fifty, two was forty-five. And three was forty-seven. So uh just continuing to to be conservative here, we we took uh the average L ninety. Uh location to a forty-five and we're going to say that that's going to be the basis for our. Um Massachusetts state code. And so the criteria becomes uh do not exceed fifty-five dB A. Um at nearby residential sectors. Um also to point out the L min in the area, you know, it it drops down to the mid to low forties. Uh so just to give you a a range and then maxims can be anywhere uh twenty dB plus of that. And that's that's typical for any. Next slide please. Um so again, we know that the the sound uh that we not only sound that we measured is dynamic. Um but we also know that the sound that we're we're going to introduce with our project will also be dynamic. And so despite the the state code trying to provide a one one parachute or umbrella to kind of put everything. Under to protect. Um we we know that really we want to come up with with different criteria that are specific for. The different types of noise that the sound the site will produce. Um so first is HVAC sound, right? That's the sound that's going to be twenty-four seven. The equipment is expected to run around the clock. To provide heating and cooling for the building. I would not want to design a site that that would then fall under the Massachusetts state code to say, you know, don't be. Uh that the ABC sounds should not be any higher or should not be any higher than fifty-five dB. Uh because I think that that's kind of a higher level for a steady twenty-four seven uh approach. So what we've done is we've set our our a goal to be more in line with that L ninety. Uh so we set a a HVAC steady goal of forty-five for the project. Meeting that would then result in the site contributing about the same sound that is currently present, which again would help result in no negative impact. Now, uh truck sound, which is the other big component of our site, that's going to be dynamic, but it's also intermittent. So it's not a steady sound. It's going to be blips of maximum levels uh from truck activity. Uh whether they be driving or or backup alarms or air brakes or coupling to coupling. And so we're going to set the goal to align with the Massachusetts state code of not to exceed fifty-five dB. Um to gang go one step further, uh because we know that we have the nature sanctuary next to us to the west. We wanted to set a truck goal that was a little bit more stringent. Uh and the the primary reason is that the the nature sanctuary of itself is quite set back from a lot of the major roadways. And so complying with fifty-five dB at a lot of our uh surrounding residences who who do have uh some proximity to. Other local roadways are going to be more used to and it's more appropriate to have a fifty-five dB goal that that all makes sense. Uh but for the nature sanctuary, we wanted to try to not disrupt the existing conditions as much as possible. Next slide please. Um so to to just give you, since I know trucks is the heart of the matter, that's what everyone is is always interested with distribution facilities. Um this is a plot from our coastal report and it is the plot of the L ten or the intrusive sound. That occurs ten percent of the time for all three locations for the seven-day period. So mind you, there is again a lot of information here, but all I ask is that you kind of look at it from a a. Take a step back and look at it from a high level. And so what we see again is that the these L ten values, which is going to be more in line with. What trucks uh at the facility are going to be producing, you know, ranges anywhere from forty up to sixty-five. It looks like it's for some locations. Um so by us doing the steps we've taken to set our criteria, you can see that cutting the line across at fifty-five. Is is well under a lot of the things that are currently occurring um onsite. And this is again in in the middle of the site. Uh pretty remote from a lot of the major roadways. Um but more so that if we were to then comply with fifty at the sanctuary. That again slices that um nearly in half and and should be able to blend in with the existing. Uh similar levels that are are occurring. Next slide please. Uh so now that we've established our criteria for the project, the next step would be to move into our model. So we've created a three D model using CAD and the software. Um there's there's pretty two two main programs that are used by professionals like myself. Um this is one of the two. Uh basically, we are able to create a three-dimensional model using the civil plans. Um taking into account the uh topography, the fact that we're we're up on it, going to be up on a hill. Uh taking into account the berm and all the uh the the off-site mitigation that we're proposing. Uh there are also some sound walls that are proposed. We can look at all that in in real three dimension and then. Model the noise sources at their appropriate locations and then able to determine how sound will propagate off-site. Uh the models here include only site sound and do not include ambient. So i- in in a way that helps keep things clean, because what we're trying to do is look at what we would be introducing to the area. Um and because these, what we're going to be talking about is HVAC, but also with trucks. Um trucks again, dynamic and mobile, but what we do is is model them their maximum at a at a given point in time. And so it's real, it's basically a snapshot. You know, we're never trying to fully. Um represent the number of active vehicles or or things on a site. However, um they will kind of go off here and there as time continues. And so you'll never have a uh. The entirety of the site i- kind of operating at a maximum in in a single point in time. That that doesn't happen. Um think about how uh car doors close in a shopping center parking lot. Um even though you might have fifty cars or a hundred cars there, um you never have them all. Active or or doing a certain motion like engine starts or car door slams at the same time to cause this symphony of of noise to build up. Next slide please. Uh so HVAC model is very straightforward. Uh we know what the the plans are is eighty-two rooftop units of various tonnage. Um power pits were not included just for simplicity. Uh given the height of the building, we're going to see a lot more of a a benefit from from the roof edge shielding. Uh the berm and the photography are all going to be included in the model. And we do have two sound walls, which I'll discuss when we show the figure, but they range from twelve to fifteen foot in height. And they're going to be shown in light blue. And what we end up seeing with the sound model is going to be um kind of like similar to a thermogram. Where you would see a heat map. And so the areas where it's noisiest, we're going to see colors that are going to be red and blue. And then there is where it's quietest, we'll see love of colors of yellow and and green. Um we will also see in the next slide that the results are going to be below the existing background sound level, so meeting our goal. And then thus resulting in no negative impact. Next slide please. Uh so here's the the fruit of the labor for the HVAC model. Um what you see in the center is the the building. Uh this orientation is actually the same as uh the figures we've been looking at. Uh earlier this evening, so north is kind of to the top left of the screen. Uh so Route twenty is on the left-hand side and uh Route one sixty-nine is to the right side or or nor or upper right side. Um so all the blue pluses in the middle on top of the building are are the active uh HVAC noise sources. And then you see that where they are more densely collected, uh the the parking lot sound levels are going to be in the orange and gray. Which represents fifty to fifty-five. Uh but then you see that as sound continues to propagate off-site and beyond our property line. Um for example, to the west, which is down screen, is the sanctuary. And you can see the considerable uh berm and that light blue sound wall line there um help that sound quickly fall off. And and uh shielded from vantage points. Um so what we're looking at is. You know, results around the property uh ranging from thirty-three all the way up to forty-five. Um with forty-five being the highest level uh at a location that we're approximating to where one of the trails are through the sanctuary. Um but again, those these levels all then fall at or below existing L nineties that were surveyed. Um in in the current field. Um we also see that to the to the top right, the locations uh GH and I, there is a considerable change in elevation. And so any sound that's propagating off-site uh kind of continues at that elevation. And then the people, the receptors at the lower elevation uh will never, um you know, they kind of experience a a shielding from that effect as well. Um next slide please. So onto the truck model, uh wh- which is uh kind of going to be more colorful. Um we modeled seven trucks at the same time, again, uh going counter to my previous. Discussion that that multiple maxims don't add up, that that is still entirely true. Uh but we try to make a model that's going to have a balance of being conservative, uh but also kind of representing what what's happening at the site. So we have seven trucks across the site. We have three driving and then we have four that are going to be modeled at a higher level, sound level action. Um those higher level sound activities would be uh coupling to coupling from trailers connecting or disconnecting, backup alarms. Um air brakes uh. Things of that magnitude. A truck driving is generally about five dB or so lower than that. All trucks are going to be modeled at a height of eight feet, which tries to split the difference between where the engine is and the exhaust stacks. Um also to point out that a lot of those higher level activities such as your air brakes, coupling to coupling and backup alarms. Are going to be at even lower height of of about three or four feet. And so modeling trucks at an eight-foot height provides again a nice balance between conservatism and uh trying to kind of do a big catch-all. Um the pink trucks are going to be modeled seventy-four dB at fifty feet and the blue trucks are seventy-nine at fifty feet. Uh the blue trucks are going to be the higher level activities. And all this data is stuff that has been acquired over the years. By our firm from uh surveys at similar sites that that currently exist. Uh and then what we're going to see in the next slide and not to jump to conclusions, but uh we will show that the all. Um off-site emissions meet code limits and are going to be below our project goals. And again, conclude that no negative impact will result. Next slide please. Um okay, so uh here we've positioned the driving trucks to be at at the the Route twenty entrance. Uh as well as the Route one sixty-nine entrance and then had one um in somewhat in the middle. Um kind of i- in proximity to location K. So the goal here is to put all the noise sources in a location that's going to be nearest the receptor. So that we can truly figure out what a a worst-case uh event might occur. If we had done, you know, the if we just modeled one on the north side, it's obviously not going to affect the receptors on the south side and vice versa. Um so what we see is, uh you know, a lot of the the higher level activity within the truckport area. Uh obviously has those those stronger colors, higher levels. Again, we model them to almost be eighty at fifty feet. So that's why we see that dark blue color. Um the driving vehicles are are somewhat lower and so it kind of goes down a notch in colors. Um but uh let's see where to start. Um I I guess I didn't mention when we talked about our HVAC, though, that all of the receptor locations. Are uh all the residential ones are modeled at a second-story height of fifteen feet above grade. Um generally trying to coincide with whether a building is going to be one-story or two-story. Um locations E and F, which are going to be located on the sanctuary property. Uh on trails are is only modeled at a five-foot elevation, which is equal to ear height. Uh so anyway, going round robin, I mean, it started B. Uh any trucks that are entering the site there. Uh location B is showing maximum levels of fifty-three. Again, that meets our target goal of fifty-five. And and the receptor location B is also right on top of Route twenty. And so uh any sound that they get is is going to be more prevalent from Route twenty local traffic than our onsite activity. Uh continue to circle around. There's a residence at location C. Uh we treated location D, which is the sanctuary. Building uh kind of treat those a- as similar. We're showing levels of the forty-eight at that distance. Again, the you can see that the berm does a substantial uh does a great job of reducing that that off-site propagation. When we go around to locations GH and I, again, these are the residential receptors along one sixty-nine. Are at a significantly lower elevation than the truck court. And so although there isn't a. Um specific barrier or or berm needed there, um we we do benefit from roof shielding or or in this case berm shielding. Where the the receptive vantage point is at such a low level that they would basically be looking up and not be able to see. Um any sort of activity that would be occurring on site. Uh again, all the receptors along Route one sixty-nine are are going to be more impacted. Uh by all the local traffic that is is currently on the roadway than from onsite activity. Um as we get near location I, Alex talked in the beginning about our acquisition allowed us to um afford a better buffer there. Uh we still are presenting uh that little blue line there is going to be a twelve-foot tall sound barrier. And we want to have that situated in a position where um vehicles still have their sight triangles and are able to see things. Uh but that for when we are in the 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 closest distance to uh the house at location I, that again, we get good shielding. Um in this figure, we've moved that noise source to be a little bit outside of that barrier. And we show results of about fifty-four here, moving behind the barrier. Those levels uh drop even further. For that short duration when they're they're going to make that turn uh to head north on one sixty-nine. Um locations J and K, also residential receptors. Uh those are are are. Further away from the site than than a lot of our other receptors that we've discussed. Uh but you can see that uh again with distance and topography, um levels in that vicinity are are down in the. Uh the upper forties, uh well below our fifty-five dB uh goal here. Next slide please. Um so one one item that always comes up when we discuss with trucks is backup alarms. Uh they certainly do have a a history of annoyance. Um most people are familiar with the tonal backup alarm, which is the beep beep. Uh there are uh other technology out there. I see um just as many over-the-road line hauls today. Uh that have a that that equal parts of having the tonal beeping backup alarm to the more modern broadband shushing alarm. Uh which kind of provides more of a white noise shh shh sound. Uh and then we even see a collection of over-the-road line hauls that don't have any sort of backup alarm. Um you know, more vehicles are being equipped with um um backup cameras and and other things to allow for safe movement. Uh also, when people think of backup alarms, uh they are primarily associated with construction sites. Uh over-the-road line hauls are not mandated to have backup alarms, uh but we do find that most of them. You know, adopt this practice because of its safety feature. So where is all this going? Well, um on a distribution facility like this, we will have our line haul trucks come and go. Generally, they are off-site vendors that are bringing and removing the trailers. Uh but a big component of our activity onsite is going to be um the site owned and operated terminal tractors. And these terminal switchers are um kind of snub-nosed cabs that have a a little bit of a hydraulic lift that allow them to move trailers onsite. They don't leave the site. Uh they're typically not um. Off uh over-the-road compliant, although they can be, but they're just basically designed to to handle that day-to-day moving around. And so because the tenant will own and operate these, we can. And so because the tenant will own and operate these, we can uh hundred percent uh commit to having all those terminal tractors. Be equipped with the modern uh quiet backup alarms. And these are gonna be none of the broadband backup alarms, which will have the more, they have the energy across uh multiple frequencies than just being the tonal beep. Uh but also they have a microphone feature that allows them to adjust to only be tend to be higher than their surroundings. So you know, in the middle of the night, when there's one terminal tractor and he's backing up and there's no one else around. That's gonna be considerably lower in level than if that backup motion was during the day and there were some other trucks in the vicinity or other noise. And we found this to be wildly successful because despite there being a a lot of truck activity on a site like this. Um the terminal tractors are gonna be responsible for the majority of the backup motion on site. And so this really helps. Um it's a it's a a small effort that has a a large ripple effect on on the benefit of reducing. Effective complaints off-site. And next slide. Um so just in conclusion, uh we kind of started with these highlights, but uh hopefully we've shown through this presentation. Uh how we've we've met those, uh but all of our onsite uh steady and intermittent noise is gonna be controlled to meet code limits. Uh as well as the more um permit or more stringent criteria that Oscar Guard has has uh set on ourselves here. To ensure that we have no negative impact. Um the goal and and we believe we will uh comply and have all. Existing emissions blend in with the the existing conditions. And then as a result of this effort, there'll be no negative impact uh from offsite. Uh from onsite operations. Um just that in our report, we touch on offsite um routes as well. Uh but I guess as the traffic study that we've heard testimony before, um we are basically trying to communicate with as short of a distance to the interstate as possible. And so that's primarily using Route twenty, uh so any of our offsite truck routes are gonna be following uh, you know, uh. Local and and county and state regulations uh for that, so that's gonna just blend in with existing traffic there. Any questions?
All right, Ben, thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Wait, John.
It is like is sound cumulative, so if you have a a truck at this decibel level. The ambient noise that has always been there at that decibel level and the air conditioners at that decibel level. That that produces, I would say, a din, for lack of a better word.
But was that you finished?
Go ahead, you are you're right on it. Go ahead.
Okay, uh so so there is a cumulative effect, um but it also depends on what we're adding. So if if you have, you know, one rooftop unit and another rooftop unit, those are gonna provide a steady noise, those will certainly add. And in our HPC model, we have all of those operating at the same time, so the cumulative effect of those was certainly present. When we look at intermittent noise sources such as our trucks, um if you were to look at a time history, it would look more like um the graphic that we showed tonight. Where there are some highs and some lows and everything in between. And so uh generally then you don't see that cumulative effect because you're not as likely to have. Maxims um overlap or coincide in that manner. Uh but so basically, we would take the existing emissions that we measured from the ambient, which is very dynamic and sloppy or messy. And then we would be introducing a new equally dynamic um sight sound to those. And so in some cases, they will overlap and and complement each other and then some, they will overlap and and slightly add. But uh generally, we won't see anything that's gonna be of of significant detriment. Um they they don't add together and then uh you know, kind of infinitely expand.
I would think of of this analogy is better, it's like a football game and you have a crowd, that noise is always there. A play goes, yay, boom, intermittent all through. Well, through the the game, but this will be through twenty-four hours, sixty-five of the uh life of this building, right?
Right, and so what what we've shown and that's kind of why we selected the criteria that we selected so that we don't. Uh come in and and stick out, right? The the more blending, the less intrusive and the 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 more. Uh acceptable things will be. So from the HVAC noise, uh based on the levels we're projecting. No one is offsite is really gonna be aware that there is HVAC over there. Uh as far as the truck noise, if there was a lull in the ambient and a maximum of a truck activity, it certainly can be audible. But we've uh controlled it to have a maximum level that won't be um. Uh you know, it's not gonna be jarring or jump out of your shoes or it's gonna blend in with a lot of the other sound levels of the same magnitude that currently exists today.
I'm gonna have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
So on the cumulative discussion, if we have two trucks at seventy-four decibels that are driving right next to each other, that's cumulative. That's almost a hundred fifty decibels at fifty feet, right?
Uh no, so uh I guess, you know, behind the scenes here, which I'm trying to keep high level, but diving deeper. Um because the the scale of sound is everywhere from twenty hertz up to twenty thousand hertz, that's a lot of data. It works off of the logarithmic scale. And so when you add two sources together, it's not a linear addition, it's not seventy-four plus seventy-four is equal to one forty-eight. But instead, the energy is is some some, and then you end up with a lateral logarithmic addition. So seventy-four plus seventy-four would be seventy-seven. Um so what you'll see is that a sale two sound levels that are ten dB in difference will not add that the higher one will prevail. And if you have two that are exactly the same, they will increase by three dB. So you can see that there's not a, you know, a giant effect that occurs. And the more noise sources that you add, then the slower the delta becomes, right? So we have eighty-two rooftop units. If we were to add eighty-third, it's so lost in the soup that you wouldn't notice that change from the other eighty-two.
Okay, uh uh I think what I saw here was a sound um model that included the HVAC. And then I saw some model that included the truck traffic. And so was there a sound model that included both of those? Or did you just?
Alex, can you go, you go back up um to slide one more? Down one. Thirty-four, yes, here. Um so actually, this is a a continuation of the HPC model. So you can see on the building, all those blue pluses is exactly what we had. So this is in fact a a summation of our steady noise and our intermittent noise. Um and so when the trucks pause, then levels will drop down to what we've shown in the HPC model. And then when one comes through, again, you kind of have to envision that these are all moving around like little ants. And that if you were to hit on a play on the the video, that they would go um and they kind of come in and out, right? With their different.
Wonder, Ben, on the um, so we've we've got, you know, the overall site plan queues up about nine trucks on the inbound main gate side. I wonder what the model would look like when there are indeed nine trucks at the inbound security gate side.
Certainly, and that's and that's something we can, we can certainly explore if needed, but uh you know, based on experience. Um what we're modeling here is a driving truck and all of our bangs and clanks. Uh when they're queued up at the loading, at the uh garchak, they're all idling. And so they're even to be even lower in level than what we've modeled here, so.
Like a seventy decimal?
Uh generally even lower than that.
Fifty.
Uh no, I would probably, if I had to guess, I can go and find this information for you, but I would say somewhere in the the mid to upper sixties. So let's say we had ten trucks queued up along there, um and let's use around a number of of seventy, um we would do. Ten log of ten would be plus ten dB, so if we were to say seventy, then they would kind of cumulatively add up to produce a level that's. You know, roughly uh around eighty, but across an entire strip, right? So um each line hall is gonna be fifty-five feet or so, and and so it's over several hundred feet where you have these lower levels. Um so.
That was real-time modeling, you're you're coming up with about eighty decibels right there.
We're just, I I'm trying to work with your scenario and and come up with a a context to it, but um. We've modeled a lot of different elements of here and what we're presenting tonight are the worst-case offenders. So you know, uh we look at at, we look at air brakes at the guardhouse, for example, which is more in line with the eighty. Of your multiple trucks queuing up and and we don't have any concerns. So what we've modeled here is where we have our hotspots that are more of interest.
One one other line of questioning, Ben, was on the uh backup alarms. What is the sound level of the backup alarm at like fifty feet?
Uh at fifty feet, you're probably um. Let me see, so most backup alarms are rated at ninety. At three feet. So you're in like seventy-five or so at fifty feet. Uh but because they're more tonal, uh they tend to have a a a greater um irritation. You know, they they kind of, they're they're specifically designed, the tonal ones, to be at one thousand hertz, which is where we hear best. And that's because they're a safety precaution.
Yeah.
Uh but the attenuation that we've shown in here for all of these in includes that backup alarm. We, the white pluses here, we've kind of created a a Frankenstein noise source, if you will. So it's the overlayment of a of a backup alarm, plus the low frequency of it to couple, plus the uh mid-high frequency of an air brake. Um all included into one, you know, the goal would be that I try to reduce the number of iterations and design work that we have to do. And and lean towards conservatism.
So that high-level action.
Wait, hold up a s- one second, Bill, just just to continue what you were saying.
Just to close, so you're saying then the high-level action at seventy-nine decibels includes the backup alarm and breaking uh airplanes?
Yes.
And and then just where are the barriers? You're you're talking about a couple of sound barriers, twelve foot?
Yeah, um so hopefully Alex can help me with her pointer, uh but one is gonna be just north of location E or just above location E. And the reason why we, we had to do that to supplement the berm, we are providing a substantial burn here. But because of the jog in the property line, we're not able to fill it uniformly. And so that that's the fifteen-foot barrier that's in place to try to just keep a uniform uh screen across the truckport. And then the twelve-foot barrier is located along the entrance to Route one sixty-nine.
Okay, two two barriers.
Correct.
And no parapets.
Uh well, there will be parapets on the building, but we did not model the parapets again to lean towards conservative conservatism.
Yes, just thank you, but I just one one question.
All right, then I go hit the one that asked, go right ahead, John.
Sure, well, why one sixty-nine? We're under the assumption that most truck traffic or all of it would go out Route twenty.
That is correct. Uh I'm I'm a uh, I may, you know, try to to provide blanket results to make sure that we're recovered. Um I do believe you are a hundred percent. Um the traffic study showed that it was a very small number compared, I wanna say twenty percent. Um but but it can happen, and so we've we've made sure that it's been addressed.
It it's less than twenty percent of truck traffic. This is Alex. Um there will be some associates going out of that. That driveway, uh just for natural flow to residencies. But as Ben said, obviously, we're just trying to be very conscientious of, you know, one vehicle going out of there is. Is enough to justify it in our mind, so.
All right, who was it that had spoken up and just wanted to ask a question? Okay, Alicia, go right ahead, sorry.
Yes, so no, no, of course, a question through the chair. So I know the Jake breaks can be extremely loud because I live close to Route twenty and you guys had mentioned staggered openings and or staggered truck traffic. What time in the early morning hours should we be expecting to hear those um Jake breaks coming through? Because as they come down to Route twenty, we're going to hear them and I realize they're pretty far away as your studies have shown. But do you have any ideas to the timing um as to the stabilization of the trucks?
Well, uh so just in general, my experience with Jake brakes. Uh that that is the compression system used for the brakes when they're coming off of a high speed, which is generally uh decelerating off of the interstate. Um I don't envision them needing to, our trucks needing to use them to access our site. It it will need to be at a much slower speed to turn in the driveway. And so if you hear jig brakes, um currently, those are from elsewhere and that will likely continue. Um but I don't see them coming in at speeds that need to use that compression brake system to slow down to enter this facility.
Can I correct you for one second, though? Because if they're coming down the hill by one sixty-nine and all of a sudden the light turns red, they're gonna be jumping on those Jake brakes to stop right at there. Granted, they won't be at you, but they're going to be a couple of feet, a couple hundred feet before you. And I'm just questioning what time we should expect them. Granted, there's not a lot of residents there, but I just, for the sake of conversation, wanna know what time we should. Do you have any ideas to a schedule yet?
Uh well, what we've assumed is it's twenty-four seven, um uh the count's varied, but you know, there would um. You know, I I guess they would kind of be at 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 any time uh potentially.
Um Alicia, again, I, this is a, this is a question for our traffic engineer who has. Much more detail on the kind of timeframe, but Ben is absolutely right, that I mean, this is a twenty-four-seven facility. That said, uh you know, the uh volume of truck traffic is much lower. In the kind of evening and overnight hours. Um but that that is kind of like a truck trip generator question more, so I don't.
So Alex, to your point exactly, could we ask that as they come down that hill, they simply don't use them? Because a regular brake on a truck is not that loud. A Jake brake tends to be extremely loud. And I realize you're not a traffic engineer, but as an acoustics person, if you could simply ask the truck drivers not to do that, I know. Um it would be a huge benefit to that entire area, because then no one will, it it shouldn't matter what time they're coming in.
Uh that's, I understand that, and and that's definitely sound logic. I know there's different um music authorities that even have a a a provision of. Kick brakes in certain areas, uh so I'm I'm not versed in the safety purposes for it and what speed trucks need to be in to do it. Uh but from a sound standpoint, I I I understand where you're coming from and I I would agree with you.
Thank you.
All right. You have any other questions on acoustics? All right, hearing unseen none. Guys, hey, do you want to have anything else on?
No.
I just have one question for Alex. So you're you're thinking twenty percent of the traffic, truck traffic will go down one six to the one sixty-nine entrance now?
No, no, no. I I that Ben is unfortunately, as he's not a traffic engineer, that's not correct.
I'm staying out of line.
Yeah, it's it's more like five percent um of the truck traffic going out of there. And I think we've done this math, it it's it's in the the low double digits of number of trucks using that. Um but I can certainly follow up with that, but but yes, it's more in the fi- five percent range.
With based upon this presentation, we'll make sure that next meeting.
Again, yes, traffic, the whole topic.
The the goal of our, and where we're coming from, from an acoustic standpoint, is the the actual quantity should eventually not matter. Because we've we've designed it so that one will not be an outlier. So you know, then you could have as many as there would be and it it's just not gonna be any different. Um so certainly, that's what we've taken into consideration with putting a twelve-foot wall along that uh to try to shield. Any of those positions where you might have that um the higher level. But um I I you know, I I think that this would, this model here applies for any number of trucks at these positions.
Shelley, you have a question?
I do, um I'm resident H on this map, so when we have that further traffic analysis, like. Can we find out at what times that bright blue spot bordering my my residential property H may occur? So I heard not jarring like, oh my god, save my life, but if three AM where my bedroom is facing that bright blue dot. That's concerning.
Well, so I understood, um so at a location H, uh this model showing your house would be forty-six. Uh and so that's actually quite low considering that there's a truck a few hundred feet away. Um with your house, I I mean, I would guess you're probably about a hundred feet away from Route one sixty-nine?
Uh I couldn't tell you that, probably.
Well, let's just use that for for round numbers. And so a a typical traffic pass by. And so, uh, uh typical traffic pass bys, including just your general automobiles, SUVs, are going to be creating levels higher than forty-six um at your facade today. So.
There's no noise in my yard at three AM. Not, I, I bought a farm, and there's very minimal traffic and certainly no backup um alarms or trailer decoupling happening on one sixty-nine at three AM.
I think you're referring to the blue dot on the property.
Right. Ben, it's important to understand, Shelley, I understand your question. You're seeing a blue dot, but what's important to understand is what, how the model is showing.
Yep, and I'm trying to confirm that, Alex. Yeah, like, I get the blue dot is where the most sound is. And that, at forty-six is at my house, but like, I don't know what that is relative to what I hear now at three AM versus what I can anticipate hearing. So like, that forty-six, is that going up from sixteen at three AM in my current situation?
I understand. So to, to help put you at ease and give you a, kind of a base point for forty-six.
Sure.
So it's going to be forty-six is what's forecast to be at the facade of your house. Um with an open window, you would expect to have uh at least ten dB reduction. And so you're looking at levels of thirty, thirty-six, mid-thirties in your bedroom, which is kind of comparable to levels that are um not only conducive to sleep, but, but already present in, in most places. Um with the windows closed, you're going to get twenty, twenty-five dB reduction um to make it to the point where it won't even be detectable, really.
Okay, that, that's very comforting and reassuring. What if that turns out not to be the case? So I hear words like, uh, we strive to, our goal is, we think. So what, wh- if there is an adverse impact on my residence and the value of my property as a result of these situations, how is that going to be remediated?
Uh well, well certainly, if there, you know, is anything that occurs after the fact, uh they can, we can investigate it, we can compare it to what has been predicted um for, for your specific location, that uh the barrier proposed along the, between the drive and your house could be lengthened. Um so there would be next steps, as, as you say, um to address specific issues.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the questions the planning board's asking, right? Like, if you drive over to my house right now, it's pitch black and very quiet. And so if this place becomes lit up like a Christmas tree, and suddenly there's backup alarms invading my space, you know, post prostitute project, I want to, I want to have some reassurance that we're going to have conversations about how to mitigate that.
Just quickly, I mean, if, if, I know the traffic guys, if they, they fail their tra- traffic color, their percentages from the state, they need to make a remedy either, you know, make a wider lane or, or remedy the traffic flow coming in and out of the building. You have that same protocol saying if you're not, you're going to study the sound after the facility is up and running, and to Shelley's point, if you're failing and that, does that mean you, you need to mitigate the noise? Perhaps put another barrier up or reroute the traffic, or is, is that part of your purview too?
Right, so uh, uh, general protocol does not call for us to come in after the fact and survey that. As you can see, we have a complex topic that we're trying to distill and then um make for a successful project. However, um to have a successful project, there, there, there should, and uh, I mean, I'm, this is coming from my, my past experience of projects, um I'll let Alex speak, but you know, there, there will always, uh should always be an avenue for Shelley to vocalize her concerns. And so that's how it would be brought back to the attention of the site to be investigated. I, I look at existing problems on facilities, uh you know, like this or, or others, uh all the time that have been built and then you know, need another look, or something new has been installed and has changed it. And so we go in and evaluate the specific concerns and then try to address that.
Well, one, one other thing, if I might, is that the requirements of, of the state DEP guidelines of the increase of ten dB is an ongoing obligation for all sites at all times. And often what ends up as a debate is what the ambient was at one time, because to some extent, everything's already occurred by the time there's a complaint. The benefit here is that Ben's report establishes what the ambient is through the seven-day study that he has at those locations. So at any time, there's an enforcement policy and procedure through the state if one believes that the site is violating the ten dB increase over that original ambient condition. We now have the data available as to what it was. It's only a question of what it became at that time. And then the state has an enforcement proceeding that's outside of the, the purview of, of zoning and obviously had some gravy teeth to it in any fashion.
Yep. Alright, Don, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you, Russ. Um so this, this is a question kind of expand on Shelley's uh concerns a little bit. So your baseline was forty-five, you came up with over a seven-day period or, or something like that. Um do we have a, a graph that shows what those, what that base was at different times of the day? Say, three in the morning, uh you know, it, it's, it's a big change. If at three in the morning, her, her ambient noise level is, you know, low forties, uh and we jumped to fifty-four or fifty-two, even that's, that's substantial at three o'clock in the morning, and it's, it's highly noticeable, so. Can we have a graph that shows what those points were at different times of the day?
Um I, I do have a ton of information from the survey. Um now, the, the only thing that is a caveat here is that all three of our um site survey locations were, were onsite and very remote from any of the local roads. So, you know, given her house is in proximity to one sixty-nine, if we were to deploy a, a monitor there for seven days, um I would expect to see you would have, you know, intermittent traffic now. Uh rightly, yes, the, the three o'clock traffic will be lower than three PM. Um but the idea is that there, there is at any time a possibility of a vehicle coming down there. Um and so, I mean, to her experience, every time a vehicle was down these public roadways, it doesn't cause the entire neighborhood to wake up. Uh so that gives us the assurance that we're setting criteria that's appropriate to not result in disturbance and, and wake people up at night. Um fifty, fifty-four is, is a pretty subdued level. I don't think that that's something to, to be concerned about. Like, when your, your garbage truck goes past your house in the morning, that's creating levels far in excess of that, and, and that's a, a jarring uh experience, or can be.
Sure, I had to say that, but I, I know from experience, uh once you're asleep, it's, it's, it, it takes a little bit more to wake you up, but when you're trying to go to sleep, and if you've got a constant uh fifty-four dB level that goes throughout the night that you're not normally used to, that's distracting. That's, that's, that's concerning, so. Since this is a twenty-four-hour operation, we should get monitors on some of those sites to show, you know, what the, what the difference is going to be. So I'd, I'd like to see that in some of these, at some of these homeowners' locations, just to make sure that.
But, but so to your point, though, that fifty-four is just showing the transient of a truck coming in that driveway. The twenty-four hour presence that the site's going to have is more like forty dB, which matches exactly with what we've measured as the, the ambient that occurs um throughout that seven-day period.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions on sound?
I think Shelley had raised, but I think she just never should.
No, I never took it down, thank you. Those are my questions for tonight.
Alright, thank you. Alright, do we have a motion to continue this public hearing to um September fourteenth? Sorry.
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing until September fifteenth.
Alright, all those in favor?
Seven AM.
Seven PM. Don Clay?
Don Clay, aye.
Alright.
Thank you for being patient this evening.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, the collection of Scriveter errors on site plan, special permit decision from Charlton Development LLC Superbowl warehouse distribution facility located two forty-one Service Road. Alright, thank you for waiting patiently. Alright.
If you'd like to, I, you know, I have.
So, this is, one of the benefits of using Mark Karoski, uh if he already had a decision drafted for another project he did in Charlton. Unfortunately, we did not update the deed reference, so I made um a few minor changes. I can show you guys. Map, map thirty-two, should be thirty-one. The deed reference book and page I adjusted to be corrected, and the word northernly should have been southerly of Sturridge Road. Also, I just clarified the dates of the plans. Um the final set of the site plan, which um Graves reviewed, was dated June eighth, so I included that as the revised date instead of December second, with a supplemental filing dated June thirtieth, which was the final grading plan that was signed off by the, the planning board. Um so, sorry.
Don, but Johnny, you have to correct your version.
I'm missing the front, you're missing that page.
Um so this is the special permit decision. So I'm just talking about the, the um site plan.
You'd have one of these.
Oh, yep.
There's also um standing there on the uh special permit.
So the date was December, it's June eighth.
This is, yeah, the date of the final revision of plans.
And that's the latest, most updated, Julie.
Yeah, so, so um let me explain, and I have the benefit of John Perry here, my engineer. So June eighth was the full set, the revised set that we gave to you that your peer review letter was based on. The peer reviewer asked us to file a supplemental grading plan that was submitted on June thirtieth, which was why it was noted as the revised. But if you go back and look for a site plan on d- dated June thirtieth, you wouldn't find one, because it's dated June eighth when we submitted it. So that was just to clean up, um to help it down the line. Um.
Does that affect any of the filing periods, or is there?
Well, that's why we're doing this too.
Correction.
So, so, if I can, um just further clarify, all of the applications reference the correct deed, map, uh block, lot numbers. Um everything was correct, but the decision. The law says that the planning board can correct um Scriveter's errors uh that happened um without going to a public hearing, so long as they agree.
Right. So they wouldn't, it just can be, you know, uh, planning board would vote to, you know, approve the Scriveter areas on the decisions, so they could be bothered in.
Then there's another waiting period. So the, the hopes of um this meeting, this tonight, is that we wouldn't have to go through another appeal period, because the changes are so minor. The intent of the decision is the same.
Said that she would not do that unless the attorney told her not to do that, that they have to do, to wait.
Okay, so, so they will.
It's, if the attorney said he was open to Mark Ross, he could provide something that said she did not have to, then.
Okay.
Consider that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can see how silly this seems to, to.
It is important, it's very important.
Very important.
That's why we want to make sure that, you know, we haven't had any, we don't want this application that they, you know, the approval to be appealed. Is it some, you know.
Discrepancy.
Right, a small discrepancy, you end up getting appealed on something minor like that. We want to make sure we do it correctly.
Don, that you, that, you understand why uh they're doing what they're doing on this, just since it's not in funnier?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm following along.
Alright, okay, alright, alright, just want to make sure.
It's a, it's a clerical issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So I take it we need to do a formal vote on both, or just one?
Uh you should do a formal vote on both.
Okay.
I mean.
Can we combine them into?
You could combine them, just make sure you just mention the special permit and the cycling approvals.
Alright.
Yeah, I think they're both dated the same day anyways, don't think.
Yeah, they are approved the same.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to approve the correction of the Scriveter errors on the site plan and special permit decision of Charlton Development LLC? The proposed warehouse distribution facility located at two forty-one Service Road.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, just state your name, just to go since I have Don.
Don Smith, aye.
Phil Fontaine, aye.
Jane Benson, aye.
Don Clay, aye.
Ross Smith, aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up, Mr. Nancy on false zoning by law change, a lot mainly manufactured homes, and it could be by the whole of community.
Yes, he had requested coming before the board this evening, but I have not, he's not spoken to me.
He's not good.
Oh, he is?
I didn't even see him for me, sorry.
Where would you like me to make this short presentation?
Let's go right up there, cheers.
Now, is, is that thing a camera?
By voice.
So, by voice.
It will follow you, if you're speaking in the outside of the room, it will.
Okay.
You can run, but you cannot.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, refer me right here?
Yeah, it's fine. Oh, great.
Okay. Okay. Well, Randy, thank you. Uh thank you for your time, members. The uh, I had mentioned a while back to Randy that here in the town of Charlton, it's just getting more and more expensive to live, and more and more difficult for retirees to uh to retire in town, stay here in town. And um I had suggested that a alternative housing, which is manufactured homes, uh and, and why, because why I'm familiar with these is I'm involved with two other individuals, and we actually built the manufacturing home community in Brookfield um from the ground up. This is almost thirty years ago, we did sixty-one units, and um the, the the connotation that's out there, and of course, I got friends who said, yeah, you own a mobile home park. Yeah, but just to let you know, it was back in nineteen seventy-four, federal government on all their HUD homes, because each manufacturing home comes with a HUD sticker, which means it's been inspected and it's all the federal level of, as far as as far as water, electrical, and um they, they had said that from, that the nineteen seventy-four law said that from here on out, the homes are going to be referred to as manufactured homes. So in keeping with that, that we call manufactured homes. One of the things that we did out in Brookfield, and, and of course, one of the forever battles that you fight out there is what people used to remember from the mobile home age, is these, you know, tin cans that were probably uh ten feet wide and, and forty feet long. And um now these homes, I know for us out in Brookfield, we had made the commitment that all of our homes were going to be what's known as double wide, which is at least between twenty-three and twenty-four feet wide and um, and at least forty feet long. So that, like, if you were to come out to Brookfield and actually uh drive through our community, you would, you would think that you were in a residential area of ranch homes that were stick-built. And uh, just to give you a a view here, this is, this is, I'll just do this through the camera, and then I want to pass it to everyone. This is uh the uh Google Earth aerial view of our project totaling sixty-one homes in the road layout that we have. And uh this is the very entrance that we have here. And that, that home that you see uh right here, was the very first home that we erected in. And that, that home that you see, uh, right here, was the very first home that we erected in, I believe it was nineteen, nineteen ninety, that house has been there for over thirty-one years. And, uh, what I did was, I just took some, some pictures of homes throughout our community. It just gives you an idea of, of the, uh, of the level of, uh, of the homes and exactly how they look. And, uh, like I said, all of these are minimum twenty-four feet wide. That particular one you're looking at, we refer that as an annual, that home's fifty, fifty, would be fifty-six feet long. Uh, actu- actually, the, the one before that was fifty-six feet, feet long. And then, and then we've got, uh, this is the other, the, the last one that, that I have as far as, uh, just to give you an idea of the homes. The, the essence of a manufactured home community is that, these homes, because they are not considered real estate, they're not attached to the ground. Uh, when they come in, the home, homes come in two, two packs and they sit on a steel frame and they have a set of five axles that they drive up from wherever they may come from, whether it's Pennsylvania and areas like, like that. And, uh, when they get to our site, we take the axles off, the frame stays. And, uh, then you support it with, uh, with blocks and then we put skirting around them. And, uh, what that means is, is the reels, the, the, the manufactured home is, what's referred to as chattel mortgage. So it's no different than if you were to, well, invite a motorhome, it's chattel. Because it's not attached to the ground, it's not real estate. So, uh, what that does do is it exempts these, these properties from real estate tax, which is, which is, I, I guess it's the, you know, it's, it's debate or it's the essence of what makes these, um, as, as inviting as possible for people with fixed incomes to try to keep the cost down. Now, over the years, and just like any industry, you've got people who try to take advantage of other people. What has happened is the Attorney General of Massachusetts, uh, you know, has gotten involved and, and, and rightfully so. And they have a whole set of requirements that have to be adhered to. And, uh, the Attorney General puts out a guide and in the guide, it, it goes through the whole process of exactly how, uh, a, uh, a, a park is operated. And one of the key things to remember is that the Manufactured Home Housing Act, which is Massachusetts General Law's Chapter one forty, Section thirty-two. And there's a whole, that whole section of thirty-two goes through a whole litany of what you can do, what you can't do, and what you have to do. And especially what happened years back, uh, there were, there were some manufactured home, home parks that were on Route one in Saugus, and, and the real estate just kept on being more and more valuable. It got to a point is that the developer said the value of this real estate is so high that I no longer want to be in the rental business, I want to get all these people out. The state says, no, 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 you just can't go and throw these people out. So they developed a law of what has to happen in that the developer, if he wants someone out, you have to find him another place and you have to pay for all of it. And so it's rather costly process and a lengthy process. And so what has happened is it's very, very, uh, rarely will you see a pack decommissioned. Because usually, a- again, they can't afford it. And I, you know, I, I, and what I'm thinking now is, you know, when you go down Route twenty, uh, once you cross the Auburn, uh, Worcester line, you'll see communities there. And furthermore, when you get closer to where Gouge Brothers used to be, right where the, the, the lake is, you know, those, you've got communities there, been there for sixty, seventy years. And they're the old, old, older units. So that's, that's the, the challenge here is how do you go and, and say, all right, we'd like to give a break or create housing to where we can, first of all, um, we can do classification of age. With retirement communities, the state and federal government, especially the federal government, there's two classifications of, uh, of age, of age. You have the fifty-five and over, and then you have sixty-two and over. Sixty-two and over, you truly, I can discriminate, no children, okay? No pregnant women, it's just got, and both, 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 or whether it's one or two, they have to be sixty-two years or older. Now, in the fifty-five old and over classification, you only need one person that, that's, that's fifty-five. And if there are children involved, they can stay because you get that one person that qualifies for it. Now, there's the, well, I was talking about Tony Randall, the, uh, the movie actor there, and, and I mean, who's having children at eighty-two. So I, again, it's, it's, uh, a- again, if you have a park and, and, and you're going to do classification of age, and what Massachusetts is saying is that if you, if, if you want to do an elderly park, then you have to either be a fifty-five or over, or, or sixty-two and o- over. Fifty-five has specific, uh, specific limitations. And, um, for us out in Brookfield, we're fifty-five and over, um, I, uh, in the, uh, I don't believe we have any, any, any school age, age, we have any school age, age, twelve children. When, years ago, um, the townspeople, the neighbors were extremely concerned. And, um, the town, actually, they stopped us on three different occasions in fear that we're going to now have sixty-one homes with three children each home and then we're just going to overcrowd schools and we're paying little to no taxes when you speak of it. Uh, that, that didn't sit well with them. And we ended up getting through that period and, uh, and, you know, fortunately, it was a long road, but it, but it's, everything has leveled out, worked out fine. So, uh, if the planning board is going to consider something like this, the, uh, the planning board, uh, how I would see it, would set up the actual rule, line of phone rules, would, would set up the framework of, of saying that if you're going to do a fifty-five and over community, such as in the town of Plymouth, Massachusetts, they have, they have, they have multiple parks within their, their town. And, uh, they still use the word mobile home plan unit development. But what they have is that they have, have it to where they'll actually have a, a, uh, a actual reading of lot size, lot width, frontage, minimum yard. And also it talks about, uh, how many units per, per, uh, per acre, I believe here, they're saying. You can put, uh, four units per acre. And, uh, when we talk about lots, really, with, with a manufactured home community, it's one piece of land. And what you do is you set up easement lines, it's just so that this is where you can cut the grass and this is where you cut, cut your grass. And rather than specifically some bounce, it's not done by me some, and, and, and bounce. And it's worked out fairly well. Once in a while, when, yeah, so I'm just kind of chuckling this, you know, it's, it's the old, old, uh, saying of people living next to each other, but, you know, you, again, we have some good management and the management says, look, this is where it is and this is what you go by, I'm going to stick some stakes in the ground and I don't want to hear anymore about it. But I will tell you is, you know, uh, you can't prevent people from having animals, at least according to the Attorney General's, uh, uh, rules. Uh, if you want to have a dog, have a dog, but if the dog becomes a nuisance, whether it's barking or whether it's biting people or whatever, then gone. You can't prevent someone from having an unregistered vehicle. Everyone's allowed to have one un- un- unregistered vehicle. So there's a whole set of, of set, a whole, whole set of rules that the Attorney General has come out with to let people live, but also to keep things confined so that, uh, this can happen. Now, one of the areas which people here may have friends, uh, um, in Sturridge, it's called Kelly Road. Chad Kelly Road has now got a new section that they opened up and they, they, they're placing new homes down there and, again, people love, love it that down there. Uh, they like the fact that, you know, as far as the value of the homes, because remember, when the people buy a manufactured home, they're not buying the land. The land is leased to them by the developer. The developer is responsible for water, sewer, trash, snow plowing, the maintenance of the roads and the maintenance of the driveways. So, um, the homeowner is responsible for for heating their home, buying insurance and, uh, and, and the license fee, they don't pay a tax, they pay a license fee to the town of twelve dollars. So the rumbling that you get from from the residents in town are saying, why are we doing this? You know, why are we allowing someone to pay so little, they live in the town, they, 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 they use our, 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 our different, uh, uh, things that we, 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 we provide. But on the other hand is, I see it as someone's lived in town for a long time and they want to stay in town, but now they want to cut their expenses down. So instead of paying that six thousand dollars a year in taxes, now they're paying a hundred and forty-four dollars. And they're, and they're able to sell the, the large home and that's, I don't have to tell you about prices in Cheltenham, they're just going crazy. Which, which is good for some, but the thing is, is what it does is it makes it less obtainable for, um, for a whole group of people. And, uh, and the thing is, is I know we, we've got people that, that my wife and I know that, you know, they retired, they actually moved out of town and moved south because their cash out and then they can get more, 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 more value for the dollar if, if they go south. So that's, uh, that's what's, what's pushing this. I just want to give you a little, uh, like, like, like I said, what the, I, the rule of the planning would be, the planning board would be, is to set up the parameters of of where they should go, this, uh, how many units, uh, per acre. For instance, this town, it's, uh, if, if you don't have twenty-eight acres, then you can't do a development. And also, if, if, again, a lot of the stuff is you do the open space. But, but the other, I, other partner in, in putting this together is Chapter one forty, Section thirty-two, it's the Board of Health that issues the license. In the Board of Health, it's main two concerns, water, sewer. I personally would recommend that, uh, uh, a project like this needs public water. If there's anything that can put you out of business ceremony is water. And the thing is, as in, in this, we have to live with this as developers out in Brookfield, that if something happened to the water, we already have a plan in place to bring tanker water into our project until we get our water squared away. If we ever get squared away, if we had a problem like, uh, uh, what happened down there in Milbury, with that, uh, pure charlie that ended up getting in the water. That's the, the, the stuff from, from blowing up, uh, ledge and, uh, they, they just couldn't deliver that water anymore. Um, so for us, we get, believe this, sixty-one homes with one well. You live and you die by it, by it.
Do you have a tank?
We have two, we have two eight thousand gallon tanks, sixteen thousand gallons reserved. It, it, the, the tanks, they, wha- what, what they are is, they are underground, but they're all, but they're, they're very shallow tanks that are now covered over on, uh, with, 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 with dirt and we have pump ups. And we're very diligent about making sure, uh, that our pump house equipment is, is updated. We just, two years ago, we just changed all the pumps, updated them, put soft stats on them. And again, we try to, well, be very conscious about that, just like in maintaining our septic systems. Uh, we had, we have it to it, I think there's probably a total twelve septic systems out, out there. One large one, that's thirteen homes. But every month, the, the, uh, um, Bertham Swim Service comes out and pumps two tanks. Every month we pump two tanks, we stay on it and then they give us a report, you know, the S space, if, if, if there's any problems, we may, we, we will get right, right on it. But, uh, that's, you can't just wait for a problem. What you got to do is be proactive in, in the, uh, the, uh, water and septic is very, very key. Can you get by as far as having private septic? You know, I, I think you can. Um, but the, I, the preference would be is, uh, I, I know if I was putting this together, I'd say is, look, you, you got to find a location that's got public water. Because public water is, is got, uh, is, is, you know, there's certainly enough of it around town. I just want to make this point about, we, we belong to the, uh, the Massachusetts Manufacturing Home Association. And what they do is they obviously, uh, work towards, towards tuning the horn. Uh, but I did want to make this, this point, manufactured homes by the not knowns. Twenty-two million Americans live in, in manufactured homes. Fifteen percent of the housing stock, stock in rural areas, eight percent of the housing stock in metro, metropolitan areas. A hundred and twelve U.S. counties predominantly in the southern western states, where one-third of all homes are manufactured homes. Twenty-five to thirty percent historically, the percentage of manufactured homes that have been placed in manufactured home leased land communities. And that's what we're talking about, manufactured home in leased land, land communities. The, uh, thirty-five to forty thousand, approximate number of manufactured homes, okay? Four point two million homes located in manufact- located in manufactured, uh, home leased communities. And then, uh, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there are two hundred and seventy-two communities. You, you wouldn't think there's that many, but when, you know, when you've got to dig around or whatever, they can find them. And I'll tell you, uh, when you go to like Taunton and, and, and now like Plymouth, there's some, there's some beautiful homes down there and, and it's crazy. To, for people to pay five hundred thousand dollars to live in one, one of these is what they pay. Now, those communities, which were very nice, uh, they've got in-ground pools, they've got clubhouses, they've got, they've, they've got the, the, the lifeguards. And I always believe that if, if that's what you want, then fine, people will add it and then you just pay for it. What we find is, most people don't want that stuff, at least up here, here in, in New England. So, uh, I just want to also make that point that, uh, and, and also with the, what our house, with the manufactured home community was saying, this is, uh, they said, as far as people's perception of manufactured homes, this is, this is, uh, this is what, what it used to be, and this is what we don't want to be. And this gives you a picture of, of, again, homes and, and packs sixty, seventy years ago. So.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for a quick question?
Go, go right ahead, Don.
Is, is what I have on the screen, the development you're, you're speaking of?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, I just, just so that
Yes.
people
Yes.
at home understand it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I didn't want to show something that wasn't accurate.
No, it's accurate, it's the Lyman Well, Don, and it's, um, that's out there in Towntown Road in Brookfield. But, and again, the purpose of me showing that was, was, the point is that, uh, that project, all sixty-one homes are, are dou- double wide, uh, a minimum of twenty-four feet wide, minimum forty feet long. Like I said, some of them are, are, are fifty, sixty long. And, um.
And it's a fifty-five?
It is fifty-five and over, yes, yeah.
Do you know, does that development, those sixty?
Yeah.
Does that go toward the towns, um?
No, I already know the question, does it go toward? No, I already know the question. Does it go toward, this is, it's terrible.
Affordable housing for the town?
Yes, the question that Jean was referring to is, does town, is town able to count, to count those as, as affordable homes? And for, for the life of me, I don't know why the state doesn't say yes. Town of Auburn had the same question. Because believe it, in Town of Auburn, there's, there's, there's 800 manufactured homes. So wow, oh yes, there's a lot of manufactured homes in town.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, you know, they had, they had the exact same question. It's obvious. Well, no, no, the thing is, is, and again, in order for something to work, it's, it's gotta be good on both sides of the fence. It can't be good all, all, all on one side. And, you know, I was using the, the term lately is, you know, it almost seems when you live in town and pay taxes in town, it's always take, 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 take. And I was just saying is, well, maybe, maybe this is a way to give a little bit back. And, and say, look, we don't have to, we don't have to win on every single one of these is, for me, create a community, especially, and, and I don't know if you can do this, to say, say to developers, look, you know, you, you gotta try to achieve 25% of local people that, that, that are going to move into here or, or, or something along those lines.
So a developer would develop this and he would manage it?
Well, the developer has no choice because, because of what the state, the state regulations, they, they, they require you to, to put all this together. And once you put it together, you can't leave or, or, or you can't, you can't stop doing what you're doing unless you've got someone else to take your place. All right, you have, you have to, you have to main, you have to maintain the septic system. You have to maintain the water supply. You gotta maintain the streets. You, 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 you're responsible for trash removal. You're responsible with snow removal. And you're, and again, there's, there's no getting out of it. And they won't allow you to, to just say to your people, all right, I'm not going to do this thing longer. Everybody pack their bags and move. Can't do it. In fact, in fact, we just had to do it up in Brookfield. We were at our anniversary. The Attorney General forces the owners to give a five-year lease to the tenants. They have to commit for five years. Oh yes, there's linked leases.
And they're renewable after five years?
Oh yeah, no, that's, yes, they are renewable.
Okay.
You know, the numbers can change, but they're always renewable because you can't tell them, I'm not going to do this anymore. Or, or.
Right, but the people have a choice to leave.
They can leave anytime they want. And just, just like what happens is.
How do they take their trailer with them?
They can, they manufacture a home.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, they, they have that opportunity. What most people will do is sell it. I'll tell you this, in the 30 years we're out there, we had one home that was foreclosed on. One. I was talking to a friend of mine who's president of bank. I says, Mike, you guys are missing the boat. I, I says, you know, why aren't you, why aren't you mortgaging more, these more, I mean, more of these? And the mortgage rate on, on a manufactured home is at least two points higher than a regular house. Washington is trying to square that away, but they, you know how Washington moves. Because manufactured homes right now, I think about 5.5%, you know, if, if you're going to go up and, and buy one. I will tell you, historically, what we experienced in, in our community, over half of the people had 50% down. Or, or some just wrote, wrote a check for the whole thing. But, and it's, and we have a, a, I'm not saying a huge amount, but quite a few, few people will, 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 will leave for four, four months of the year.
Yeah.
Or three months of the year. So.
So are you a public water supplier or?
Yes, we are a public water supplier. Yes, yes, yes. Get that news around, around our neck. And that, and again, it, it just, because we're just used to it now, but you can't give that, not that you want, not that it's an option to give it up. You're bound to do it. Because the thing is, is you're responsible for the water and you're responsible for the septic. And you're responsible for those streets. You're responsible to make sure that the snow plowing is done and, and, and that the, the police and fire and emergency all, all can get in there. So what it is, is, it, it, in, in a way, for a town to consider this, especially a town like Charlton, someone who gets involved in this, they're not going to walk away from it. Because they can't afford to walk away from it. They're going through all of the building of what they do. And then what will then keep them, their attention is, is the financial return.
Mr. Will, ask you, are there any examples of co-op owned or member?
Yes, there are. In fact, in the town of Brookfield, Wagon Wheel, which is I think 141 units, and Wagon Wheel was formed back in the 40s. And then there's Nantucket, which I think is 88 or 89 homes. And they're both kind of all around that Lake Road area. The way that Crow flies, really not that far from where we are. Now those units, like I said, they're a mixed bag, a lot of single wives. And this is another thing. As a developer, if you're going to go and sell your park, you have to, after, after you put it for sale and, and get a, a viable buyer, you have to say, I'm going to put it on hold. The Attorney General tells me, I have to offer it to the people who live here. So, so what Wagon Wheel did in Nantucket, they formed a co-op. And then the co-op went to the bank and, and the bank said, look, you need at least half of your people who are willing to buy into this. We'll, you know, we'll get them a loan. And if you can get half, then we'll float the loan for the rest. So that's how both of those became co-ops. Now, now, and again, I was talking about water. Wagon Wheel just got a, USA, USDA, I don't know if it was USDA, but, but a loan from the federal government to redo the water system with a septic. I think it was a water, it's like 3 million bucks. That's a ton of money. And I, I don't, it's, and again, those people strapped with it. That's why I say is, if Charlton's going to do this, you're doing someone a favor by saying, you don't have public water, you can't do it. So, and again, I, I believe you still would keep the same, the, the same criteria of where you are for your, for your, your 55 and older. But if you were to take this on, is, you know, you're set, set of, 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 from the Attorney General, you've got a real good base there as far, as far as rules go. And I will tell you, as, as, as an owner, we have to develop a set of rules for our people to follow. This set of rules have to be approved by the Attorney General. Well, they use these words. They have to be approved by the Attorney General. So you submit them to the Attorney General and all he does is disapprove rules. They don't approve any rules. In other words, we've got, we have now a set of rules, I don't know, it's 12 pages long. And, and we talk about junk cars, we talk about dogs, we talk about if you don't cut your grass and it's over nine inches long. And, and these are all protective things. But the Attorney General had to approve them. When I say had to approve, he, he, you had to submit a set of rules. And when you get the set of rules back with no markup, then you know you're there. Because I, I, I believe they don't want to take the liability of, of being the ones who approved the law. Russ, I gotta apologize, it's 20 and 10.
Yeah. I was just about to say, can we wrap this up?
Yep, I'm, I'm pretty much wrapped up. And again, I will, you know, I will, I will try to stay in touch with Randy. Again, if there's interest amongst the membership to, to pursue this, I will certainly work with Randy and, and try to come up with, with, from my opinion, is, is what we should go. But anyways, thank you for your time.
How much would a new unit, double wide unit, 40, 5 foot long?
Okay, now, I, I, I gotta say.
Do you have an idea?
Not like you used to, okay. When we was, we probably sold most of our units after getting stopped three times. Probably in, in between '07 and 2010. We were buying the 56 footers. There were three bedrooms and, you know, obviously either 20, 20, 28 feet wide. And they count the footage by the eve because it's going over the road. So really it was 20, 26 feet wide. We'd be getting 130 or 144. Now, we've, we've had homes in our park, and again, they, they have, were just sold for, you know, for 106,000, 107,000. But they're beautiful homes. There's fireplaces in them. They're gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. 1200, 1400 square, square feet. And then, then they're responsible for us for the groundwork. The groundwork includes water, sewer, trash, snow plowing and that stuff, and, and then land right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very nice.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next up, we got Sturridge Road Solar Farm LLC, North Sturridge Road Solar Facility Site Plan and Planification. Got a great report, a package in August 4th.
Yeah, they made some corrections to the plan. Stormwater issue with the conservation commission and they also, the most current plan have rearranged your rate. Now they have a second fire access road. They had originally had one on one side of the property, now they have two.
Okay.
Should they rearrange the array to.
Accommodate that?
Be more inspired with that.
All right. That's all they pretty much did?
Yes, that's what they've done.
All right.
There was a question about their decommissioning bond, which they haven't gotten approved one yet and they will, they need to have it put in before they get a CO. And they know that, so the last one, they're working with, the last one they proposed was not enough, so.
All right, so they're in the process of coming up with a.
Yeah, they'll be back for the board to board.
Okay, all right, okay.
But right now, this is just a field change as a result. The, the, the raise staying inside the original fenced area.
Yep. Okay.
So that's not changing.
All right.
And the, the bond calculation, there was some question, was it old bond calculation method or new method?
Well, that's something that we had to, we're going to have to take up because the planning board policy on that was voted in. I gotta, from a legal standpoint, I gotta know how we can apply it. Can we apply it to, given our new bond policy, which is $70,000 megawatt? Or because this project was prior to that? I just gotta make sure we legally do it correctly.
All right, but that's a whole other, that's a whole other, it's going to get approached before they.
It'll be back.
Come with a certificate of operation. So that's on the table right now. Okay. All right, are there any questions from the board? Don, any questions on this field change for these guys? No? Okay.
All right, sorry, no.
That's all right. I can see your mouth and I saw the, I saw the mannerism and I knew what you were saying. Yeah. All right.
And Graves has feedback, they're fine with it?
He, he, yes.
Yeah.
It was in his meeting. No, that was. They asked, requested manner.
They get cleared. It's fully cleared, that's it, then they stop.
Yeah. Yeah, they, it's a mission for the conservation commission, so that they got shut down for a little bit.
Oh, they did?
So.
Put on timeout.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the field changes?
Hold on, I'm sorry, can I? Are you going to allow comments?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, um, the change was from 5.2 megawatts, it's been increased to 6 megawatts. I talked to Angela and they did some extra clearing and they added, they requested more of a retention or a larger catch basin. So that's why it was held up, but they did put them closer together. So they're, they're not, it's just, it's more than just a simple field change. It, it went larger. So with 6 megawatts.
Could they stay within the footprint?
It doesn't sound like a lot, but you're, you're probably adding about 2,000 panels. Because it takes 3,000 panels per megawatt approximately. So I just want you to know it.
All right, okay, now Randy, they stayed within the footprint, right? Nothing changed as far as the footprint of work, as far as the fenced in area, this and that.
Yeah, they stayed within the existing fenced in area.
Yeah, then what Laurie's getting, I think is we can approach that at the bond time? Would you, if they did increase their megawatt? Because isn't that what the bonds are all based upon?
Right, yeah, it's going to be based on the value of whatever they have in there or the dismantling cost. So the higher, the more they have in there, the more it's going to cost people a bond.
All right.
Which is exactly why we might be able to buy the new $100,000 per megawatt tube on.
They're not changing the footprint, but they're changing their output, their.
That's correct, yeah.
And that's.
If there's more panels, you know, they're obviously.
All right, anything else, Laurie?
So you're saying that it's a simple set of field change as opposed to a formal site plan review?
As far as the planning board goes, nothing changed within their footprint, within the fencing area that they had proposed on their original plan.
Okay. I just have one other question.
Go ahead.
This would be more for not, not being hardasses or anything, but we are dealing with the, and this is from their website. They're the largest power brokers in the world. And they have 40 to 50 billion dollar projects going. So just to be good neighbors, they, at, at the hearing down in the senior center, we discussed what the fire department wanted with the access road, just a gravel path around the primer of the entire property so it doesn't jump the fence, any fires. It would contain it within the fenced area. It didn't make it to the final plan for some reason. But it was discussed, so I'm not sure what happened back then. But right now, the, the access road is within the fence and it's about around two-thirds of the property, which, you know, it's good, except Chief, Chief Knott said that, you know, they're just going to let it burn itself out if there's ever a fire. And there's significant woodlands all back there. So I just want it to be made known that, you know, we don't have to mandate a lot of this. Maybe to be a good neighbor, they would go, yeah, hey, it's not going to cost them anything. It's just a piece of paper right now. The plan is just a drawing. Maybe there's something they can do. And, and I sent a letter late this afternoon. I, I didn't get to see the plans till today. But I sent it to, to chief and I was hoping that you would just talk to him. I know apparently Kurt approved the plans. But I, I think this was maybe something we could have asked for, even though we didn't formally put it in the regulations. We don't, we don't have the fire department's batteries in a formal regulation right now. So I just think sometimes you just, you know, we don't have to go to litigation for everything, just ask. They say no, well, no.
Right? No, I know, but the thing is, they already went through their site plan approval.
But this is a change. This is a change. It's an amendment to a site plan. So I guess if we want to go back and readdress the bonds, then that has to be like when people added the batteries. But how, how strict are you going to be for field changes or formal site plan review when it comes to finance and safety? That's something you guys are going to have to talk about, but I'm just afraid we're going to set precedence to, we allow, you know, an increase of 2,000 panels, even though it's squished in within the same plan. We won't be able to address bonds because they were before town meeting 2019.
Yeah, I just think, just my opinion, I think since it's already been approved, and everything's done within the footprint, I don't think we have any skin in the game.
Conservation did though. They went in and changed the catch basin.
Laurie, hold up. Conservation, stormwater is totally different than what we approved. They have a little bit, there, there's, that, that can fluctuate. As far as, but as far as the site plan, we, you can't go back on it.
Right, they can go, okay, if they add more panels.
But they were within the footprint of the work.
Right, but if, if our, if the bond of the decommission.
Yeah, we can go back on that.
Is based on the number of panels and we should be able to go back.
The increase in number of panels naturally increases.
I think it's two different conversations.
Yeah.
Unless you deem this not a field change.
Well, that's, that means the board has the purview to do that.
And the recommendation by Graves is that it's a field. And the recommendation by Graves is that it's a field.
Yeah, cause I think, cause it stays within the same footprint of the original approval.
And I understand.
Are we sure about that footprint, though? They cleared right to the property boundaries, I just, I hope.
Well, we're going by our peer engineer who's, I think, pretty, I mean, we we have a lot of faith in, I mean.
I I do too, I just don't know if he walked the property, I mean, right now, it's um, I guess it's not there, so. Okay, well, I just wanna know.
Yeah, no, thanks for making us aware of that stuff, and I know that once the uh the bond comes up, we're gonna, I mean, we'll greatly appreciate your input. On any information you have. As far as, yeah.
If 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 they cleared beyond, if they cleared beyond what they have in the plan, then that that'll all could be remediated in in fix, but. That's it's still, that's that's a different subject.
Yeah. Actually, Randy, mind checking in and see on conservations and. How much they did go above and beyond what they were allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
Just check with Angela. Oh, Angela's chiming in, go ahead.
I'm cutting out again, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep, that's better.
So their original gearing limit, they went beyond it by about fourteen thousand square feet, and that's where they're now putting more panels.
That's out of the footprint then.
No, wait, with outside the fence in here, the fence in here hasn't changed.
Maybe on paper.
Well, let's, I mean, that's something we have to look at, is have they gone beyond what the original site plan said?
But that's why they got stopped, it's because they cleared beyond what was originally proposed as their clearing limit.
Okay, then then in my point of view, they're gonna have to remediate that and and replant.
Did they do that to put, or did they do that to put this additional stormwater measures in there, or did they do that to put additional panels?
They did that right off the bat, and that's why work got stuck. And then. And the record was from twenty eighteen and you had one from. Twenty, maybe even twenty twenty one, that it changes to the stormwater and changes to the access road. So that's why we had them amend their current permit with us.
I don't, I don't think I'm prepared to vote on this until we get more information.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. We'll continue to the next meeting.
Yeah, and. Now, in check with Angela, did you receive a plan from them showing? I'd like, how'd you realize that they cut in excess that fourteen thousand square feet beyond what was approved?
Um, they did drop stuff off Monday, I think it is shown on now.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it and verify how it matches our approvals.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, July twenty three drawing.
So, yeah, I think we should continue until we.
All right.
Get a better understanding.
We're gonna table this, sorry, thank you Laurie and Angela for speaking up about this.
Welcome. Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All right, so yours in the field.
We'll table this. After further look into it. We don't need to vote to table this, do we, Randy?
No.
No, all right. All right, next up, Prophecy Solution Real Estate and Contracting LLC, Hammond Hill Road, Common Driveway Reduced Funders Law, Special Plant Field Modification.
This one's much easier. They had to change a culvert under the driveway.
Yeah.
Um, Mike Ambig went out there with a preconstruction meeting in the minute. Yeah, well, it was, the property owner made him aware that he went out there and reviewed it during a few construction meetings and. He had new issues with it, he'd be done as a simple field change. It's already in place, so. Reduced funds law, I think the two lots and one of them already has a house on.
So so one more thing that the Graves brought forward on this is um the driveway is not paved, it's they're they're using millings. Is that something the fire department is okay with? Uh, that's not something, it's gonna hold up over time, just, you know, this is a shared driveway, a common driveway. Goes past, that's that's not part of the 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 regulation.
Right, did I read somewhere that the chief approved that somewhere, did I see that somewhere that he looked and. Has he changed it from a hammerhead to a circular or a roundabout too? There used to be a T and that, and then said they made a loop.
I I mean, what they say is the, you know, building commission is also. Very active with the fire department, he's always from a fire standpoint, so he believes that driveway is not. Um, the the way it's supposed to be, if it was supposed to be paved or something, he will make sure that they don't get it. If the bottom see our house.
Zoning board. Zone by law requires a paved surface.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that'll have to be an opinion. Million, this million, millions count as a paved surface, you know, one to.
Yeah, I guess.
Being a common driver with two separate owners, common driveway.
Yes, two separate houses.
Yeah, so let me get into, I want my half paid, but I don't want, I don't wanna pay my half.
No, I mean, it, I'm, no, actually, the opinion of Kurt, because he's also the zoning official of whether. That is considered a paved surface.
But once again, until, this is a, this is a change that we need to vote on, and and I'd hold off on this one until we got the opinion from the the zoning enforcement.
Yep.
Okay. Cable that one to the next one as well.
All right. All right, all ready? Next up, we got Gare LLC, Jennings Road Extension Subdivision Annual Approval Extension Request. To nine fifteen twenty twenty two. Did he send an email or anything in requesting that?
Yeah, he actually, um, you know, have it here, but I actually have it right from uh Ross Jennings.
Okay.
I didn't see that.
Yes, yeah, supply that.
Very brief.
And they uh last year, I don't, Board of the Twelve asked, asked Mike Ambig to look at it from, because it had been a while.
Yeah.
And he did last year, you know, so. Nothing's changed since last year, you know, but he, because it had been so many years since.
Right.
It's always started last, at the last extension request. Asked for Mike Ambig to do what he has.
I think we've been trying, and that that was Don, Don was. One beyond the ones that have gone away, so.
Yeah, so.
Are you all right, all right with that, Don?
Yeah, I'm assuming they had, they also resolved the environmental issue they had earlier this year with with the storm runoff and 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 whatnot. Has that happened? Didn't they have a problem earlier this year with some stormwater runoff?
Yeah, I think they, I think they squared away now.
Yeah, I think that was actually a, an issue between a couple of private property owners, it wasn't necessarily. Um, resulted from this subdivision being built, it was something.
No, I thought there was another section of the subdivision that that the EPA actually got involved with, was that the subdivision?
Well, agents online, I don't know if you still.
Yeah, I think it was, had to do with um. Some kind of permit, just as far as a maintenance. Yes, that's all, I think that's what it was.
It's two, it was two swipers, so it's that and with uh. The things on room twenty.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Didn't have or had to get them up to.
Is Angela there? Oops, seriously, Don.
Yeah, I am.
Are you gonna be implementing and and watching these SWIP permits with these developers now?
Yes, um, I'm sitting up so they can, I'm using Dropbox currently with Carpenter Hill Road Solar. Um, I am actively working with Mr. Nichols. To get some type of reporting from him, um. Jennings Lane, I'll be honest, I haven't had time to touch yet, I know it does have a history and EPA got on the same thing. Just for not submitting, you know. Under their construction general permit and our regulations now, which mimic it. They're supposed to be submitting weekly reports if they're in like critical areas or like Amazon. A land use with a higher potential for pollution, um, or. For other sites that aren't in critical areas, it's every two weeks and storm events over point two five inches. Inside the only one that really has been complying to the fullest extent is Carpenter Hill Solar. But I do know that. Is supposed to be doing this as well.
If 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 we could get some type of interface between us and what you're, what you're doing, we're, we kinda didn't. Black that in the past, so we're kinda unaware uh of the reporting status of SWIP permits and. Cause it's part of our approval process on some of the jobs, is that they adhere to these, these uh. The the SWIP and we've really hadn't had a lot of information in the past about that. So is there maybe some type of straight line, Randy, we could work out with that, just a Dropbox or something?
Yeah, something.
Just a paper trail on some of these.
I would, Kurt, with the new permits up, they actually have stormwater modules where. Attached to the property, so any department can look at it.
Okay.
Okay, so I I'm I'm not comfortable with any of these developments, you know, extending permits and 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 um. Site plans, if they're not in compliance with other boards in in the town, so is that something we we need to check before we start doing these? These uh extension requests, I think.
It's hard because each board kinda has their independent. Like I focus a lot more on water on construction, stormwater and BMPs and controlling the erosion on site where. From a planning board, it's more of the actual site plan and. Oh, I've always. And that makes sense to you.
Okay, okay.
Cause you know, all erosion goes downhill, do river stream wetland, so.
Okay, thank, thank you Angela for the input. I do have a motion to uh. The annual approval extension request for. Gare LLC on Jennings Road Extension, nine fifteen twenty twenty two.
Make a motion, that would extend it, nine twenty twenty two, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Don Clay, I.
All right, Russ Messi, I, all right. Next up, other business unknown, a time of posting, you know, you have a letter in our packet.
Yes, yeah, it's uh last.
Yep.
Time by the board selecting unbeknown to the planning board, so then they want to address that and. Quest to go through the board's question with their questions on. It's all done.
Yep, pretty straightforward and to the point.
One of the items in is kind of interesting that in, when I was thinking through the signed host community agreement. If the. State Siding Board denies the application, they still go into the planning board because the board is selecting a sign that. We need to give them a pass regardless of what happens. So somebody.
That's how the host agreement is written, or that's the rule.
Yeah, that's how, that's how the state, the state. Yeah.
No, if the state approves it, they would, would have to anyways, but because the host. Now when it's signed, they don't have to, the state denies it.
Yeah, um, so sometimes you think, why are we here?
This project anyways, yeah. So Randy, I don't know if you re-reviewed that that document, but there were a couple of uh, couple of typos in there you might want to look at. I didn't get a a chance to.
There's a couple of typos, one was uh. First word in the third sentence in the first paragraph is the.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was another air place where uh approved should have been approved with BD.
Okay, all right, if you, if you read it, that's, that's good.
Do you have any others that you saw?
I I don't have the document right in front of me, so I I don't remember what I had gone through, I I started to to mark it up and uh. I got called off into something else.
Yeah.
My uh, my ADD acted up.
Eat some candy. Oh, it's it's a, it's kind of a, I don't know, I think they just threw their heads, hands up in the air and were sick of dealing with it.
I think they felt they were in a corner, maybe.
When I was before the siding board, you know, we're back when we were doing the presentations. The siding board said, why don't you have a host group, you need women in the town, because. By giving him host group, a host community agreement is like saying, yes, we're okay with it.
Yeah, and if you're gonna do something like that, at least try to get something substantial out of it, not, you know, uh lunch money.
Yeah, I I have to agree with that too. And they're also trying to, um, they're now proposing to put in a gas turbine so they could be a generating facility. So they can not be, not pay taxes or as much taxes. You have to be a generator to be taxed, that's on certain thing, so now there's throwing this.
So that's as bad as um getting utility preference and not having to pay taxes.
They put in this turbine for a generating facility.
And that to avoids taxes.
Yes.
The town's not gonna, we don't get any gas, except for income gets gas, but we don't get any gas. We're gonna have dirt and beach taxes and balances in the road we. Doesn't even buy a toothbrush.
The only thing that I can see is the plan, the board of selectmen said, well, the planning board doesn't get a say anyway, because it's so exciting.
So we don't.
But they haven't done it yet, they're, we've been waiting two years, you know, we we, it was not, it's not all, it's not only the. Training boards, the zoning board of appeals, they need a number of appearances and. They can't, you know, the legislative isn't getting them, they're slim, and they don't even wanna do that, so.
Did I read that correctly? If we spoke out against it, that's not kosher either.
Yeah, they they were gonna, uh, we have to write a letter in non-opposition, the town has, well, specifically the board, I can't know.
All right, we have a motion to uh send this letter off.
Make a motion that we present this letter to the uh town administrator and the select board. As written.
Yep, all right, all those in favor?
Gene Vincent, man.
Bill Fontaine, I.
John Smith, I.
Don Clay, I.
Ross Messi, I.
She's still awake?
All right, sweet, all right, you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Don Clay, I.
We should take I.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Hey, folks.
Great.
It's an algorithm, I like that.